Welcome to Tampa City Council. We would like to start this meeting with a roll call vote, please.
Miranda.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Hurtak.
Here.
Vieira. Carlson.
Here.
Clendenin.
Here.
We have a physical quorum.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Hurtak, to open all the public hearings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. We... Okay. We're gonna get right going. So if you are here today, let's start with the scoring and just get that out of the way. Well, I thought we'd just get out of the way, but if you don't want to, we don't have to. Okay. Be sworn. Okay. Very good. Never mind. We're gonna start with item number one, TACPA 2501.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission staff. This is TACPA 2501 located at 3606 West Bay to Bay Boulevard. This is privately initiated, small scale, approximately 0.14 acres, and the request is to go from residential 10 to residential 20. The site is in the South Tampa Planning District in the Palmasian neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site outlined here in pink. In the surrounding area, there are a mix of uses. Commercial uses are to the west on the west side of Heims. And residential uses, single-family detached, are to the north, east, and south of the subject site. This is looking at the subject site. This is looking east on West Bay to Bay Boulevard at the adjacent property. This is looking north on West Bay to Bay. The subject site is in the rear. This is looking west on West Bay to Bay Boulevard, the subject site's on the left. And this is the single-family detached home directly behind the subject site. And this is the southwest corner of West Bay to Bay Boulevard inside South Heims Avenue at the commercial use. The subject site is outlined here in black and represented with the residential 10 designation, which is to the northwest and south of the subject site. This residential 20 right here is as a result of a plan amendment from 2018. And further north is the residential 6 designation, and further east is the community mixed-use 35. Again, the subject site is outlined here, represented in black with the residential 20 future land use designation. Under the existing residential 10 future land use designation, the site can be considered for one unit or slightly over 1,700 square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. Under the proposed residential 20 future land use designation, the site can be considered for two units or just over 2,400 square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. Locational criteria is expanded under the residential 20 designation. The Planning Commission found this amendment consistent with the housing policies to ensure an adequate supply of housing is available to meet the needs of Tampa's population. And with that, the Planning Commission recommended that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Councilwoman Hurtak.
Thank you. Can you put the map back up? With the future land uses? Either one is fine. You said that it is residential 10 north, south, and west, but isn't it also east because of that one section?
Yes, I did omit that. But yes, this one parcel that right here is residential 10, which does in between.
Okay, so it's surrounded by residential 10?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, applicant.
How can I switch to desktop? Oh, there. I have it on here. Hello, everyone. This is the request to change the future land use of 3606 West Bay to Bay Boulevard. As update was mentioned by city staff, Planning Commission in public hearing, in public hearing, it was found consistent. So I'm proposing future land use changed from R10 to R20. So I'll pass the agenda. So I just went through the comprehensive plan goals of the city of Tampa. They're like, if I want to summarize it here without going through every detail. There's like smart growth, promote compact mixed-use, walkable neighborhood, sustainability and resilience, affordable housing, transportation connectivity, economic vitality, community character, public engagement. I didn't see any conflict with these goals. So the objective to present the rationale for changing the FLU designation from R10 to R20, and the overview is highlighting the benefits and alignment with the community development trends. So properties, R10, single-family residence, proposed usage R20, as I mentioned. So there are a few pictures from different aspects from the top. As you see on top left, from the front, in the middle, on the right. You see that it's right next to the light. When there's a red light, there's cars lining up all the way to Dale Mebry. There is also, from the security camera at the bottom, you see the view. So key point, although R20 allows for higher residential density, the properties constraints make high-density development unlikely. The benefits of, you know, changing the R20, and my goal is making it an office, back office, like a small office with two, three staff, is lower practical density, reduce traffic due to standard business hours, which is nine to five, Monday to Friday. So there's not gonna be increased traffic, unlike what everybody thinks. Decrease noise compared to residential use, no traffic silence before 8:00, 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00, 6:00 p.m., no traffic on holidays and weekends. And it will be a nice transition for the properties behind Bay to Bay. There are some challenges by living there, as the first one's high noise levels from proximity to a busy intersection and traffic light, as I mentioned. Privacy and safety concerns due to immediate adjacency to the street and traffic, people passing by all the time, and the traffic. Difficulties in maintaining a peaceful residential environment, especially for families with young children. So this is another view from the top. There are commercial, on the map, I see there is, actually, this is how it looks like if you see in the middle. When you open the door, you see the street right here. There is something across the street, MBS, some office or something. In the same block, there is most insurance here. There is a church on the corner of Dale Mebry, and as you see the traffic all the way from Dale Mebry, they all turn this way to go all the way to the Bay Shore area. But the others, like west of Dale Mebry looks better, but east of Dale Mebry all the way to Bay Shore seems different in terms of traffic. So alignment with surrounding land uses, shift from residential to commercial use between Dale Mebry and Heims. So that's changing trend, actually is growing in that area. Existing offices and a church within the block, as I mentioned. Predominantly commercial properties beyond Heims Avenue, which is just one house down. And the corner one here is already, as mentioned, is resold in 2018. This is the property in the subject. And the current zoning is planned development, and this is the property. There is one between, but I talked with them. They were willing to do what I'm trying to do as well, but they just, I don't know, didn't have patience or time. But they are willing to do if this happens. I'm sure everybody in this street. And as you see in the same area, there are two PDs actually after Sterling, between Dale Mebry and Sterling, there are two planned development zoning. So this will be, in my opinion, more efficient land use, promotes efficient land use and accommodates growth in area with existing infrastructure, fosters a cohesive community character, as you know, everybody else across the street. There is a church, there is a dental office, although it's, you know, after Heims, but still very close. You know, there's economic development, like attracts small businesses, like another opportunity for like having a... I know people looking to have an office, back office in that area, in that location. Increase property tax revenue, improves land use efficiency, attracts investment in infrastructure and maintenance, reduces residential turnover, and encourages entrepreneurial growth. Conclusion is obvious, what I'm trying to conclude, and I urge your consideration of future rezoning policy for residential properties along Bay to Bay Boulevard, specifically this one, to allow transition into commercial or office use, subject to location and lot size. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I neglected to ask you to state your name at the beginning of the presentation. Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry. My name is, I go by Sam. My name in ID is Nemad, last name Karimion. I'm the owner of the property.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Hurtak.
I have a question for staff. It might be for our staff, but we'll see. Right now, R10 has an office use in it.
Yes, if it meets locational criteria, it could have a commercial use, yes, a commercial neighborhood.
Okay, so then my question to you is, you can already have an office in R10. Why do you need to go to R20?
This was what I was, I don't know, directed.
Hold on a second.
Just like the one on the corner did. So that was, so we had consultation with the city in the beginning, so that was the direction I was given.
Let's get some further clarification.
Jennifer Lo, sorry, Planning Commission staff. We can't evaluate, a couple things go into locational criteria, right? We have to take into consideration the surrounding development pattern. We also have to take into consideration the actual criteria as written. And for R10 as written, that is 50% of the block face has to be zoned commercial. Now, I am not in front of you for a zoning analysis, so I cannot tell you for fact if it would meet or not meet locational criteria. What I can tell you is that 50% of that block face is not zoned commercial. I can also tell you that for residential 20, the locational criteria is expanded. So it's met, one of the criteria is if it's located on a collector roadway or higher, which West Bay to Bay is.
Okay, thank you.
So for the applicant, Sam. I just wanna ensure, what you're attempting to do, are you attempting to keep the residential with an adjacent office, or are you trying to change the use of the property in total to commercial?
My goal is to change the current zoning after, because this is the first step. I was told that this is the first step, and then the next is...
Okay, I was just curious, I just wanted to make sure I understood exactly what your intent was and if it fit within what we're looking at here. Okay, very good. Counsel, any additional questions?
No, I'm just gonna say...
Uh, microphone.
Doubles the size of what can go inside, as far as from R10 to R20. So how is it less density and less people and quieter? You made some statements.
So my neighbor, for example, the next-door neighbor, there are like three, four cars parked all the time. There is a...
I'm having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
So for an instance, then the next-door neighbors, I see two or three cars parked all the time, and they go back and forth. There is like family of, let's say, five, six people living there. And it's not just within business hours. So it's after hours, they can go out, they can go back and forth, like three, four cars, and five people living. It's different than two, three clerks, like people in the back office leaving after 5:00, 6:00, and not showing up Saturday, Sunday. So it's, to me, it's less traffic.
I understand what you're saying, but that could happen in any zone.
This is a specific, because it's on the...
We're not talking about right on the... We're talking about the land on the zoning. Future land use.
No, it can't happen on any zone.
I got it, thank you.
Yeah.
For Planning Commission staff, worst-case scenario, with, what could we see with the future land use designation change? Or best-case scenario, if you were looking at the most highest density, house highest, what would this look like?
It's a 7,000 square foot lot, so you can't do much on...
So you've got restrictions in size of the lot?
Yeah, I don't think you can build a tower or something, so...
Okay.
Practically, it's not possible.
Got it.
All right, so here's the potential impact slide. This is what can be considered under the residential 10, just slightly over 1,700 square feet. Under the residential 20, it would be just under 2,500 square feet, could be considered on this site. And at that point, we could, locational criteria would still apply to the site, but it is broader under the residential 20 designation.
Okay. Councilwoman Hurtak.
Is there a potential for bonus with R20?
No. Well, not for commercial. For residential, it could be 18 units per acre or 20 units per acre.
Except this, I mean, there's nothing that's saying, I mean, R20 is not commercial.
Well, I was separating the bonus, that you can't get, like, the FAR is a .5 for this designation, but if it was going to stay residential, you know, like, we have to consider that as well. If it was gonna stay residential, it'd be either 18 units or 20 units per acre, but that's the only part of a bonus that could be considered. You can't get a bonus for more commercial.
Yes, I understand that, but I think what we're trying to find out is, because this future land use stays with the land, if this office, if it becomes an office, that's one thing, but just because they say it wants to be an office does not mean that that will end up being what happens. So the most that you could put on this land is two units max, even with extra density and bonuses. And the most of the square footage that you could put in that two units would be what? Because that's 2,400 square feet, that's commercial. That's not residential.
The category doesn't, it doesn't regulate the FAR of the dwelling units. So we're saying the future land use would allow to two dwelling units, but we don't know how big those would be. The FAR, the total square feet you see down here, the 24,000, would be if they develop the commercial.
Yes, that's what, okay.
So the restriction on that would be setbacks and everything else? Or naturally restrict the size of this?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anything else to add? Are you applicant, are you finished with your presentation?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to this issue? We have a motion to close from Councilman Maniscalco, and we have a second from Councilman Vieira. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, it's closed. Anybody with discussion? Discussion, pass one, Hurtak.
I'm very, I'm concerned about this one only because everything on that block is still R10, except for the R20 on the corner. If this was next to the R20, I'd be less concerned about it. Because automatically, then, that property will most likely go R20. And then, what's the domino effect we're setting up? And this one's difficult for me.
Yeah, when I first heard it, I was thinking something somewhere, but honestly, that, the nature of that block and that area is, I think I agree with the applicant. It's more conducive to changing to a low-intensity commercial because of, it's not hospitable for families to live there, it's, you know, the density of people that live in a house versus a low-intensity commercial place. It's a pretty intense street.
Sure, but again, the future land use means two residences can go there, and that's, I mean, is... Yeah, I mean, I suppose that's kind of what we're trying to do.
The highest and best use of the property, you know, the highest and best use seems to be probably commercial. Any other discussion?
I agree with Councilmember Hurtak, but even though this is not cause judicial, nobody presented evidence to the contrary. And so the only thing we can infer is our own analysis of what he presented. And so if there was evidence presented to the contrary, then it would be easier to vote no. But in the absence of contrary evidence, I would just make a motion in favor to see what happens.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Counselor, shall we?
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder, with regard to evidence, this is a legislative matter. Right, so the question is, in terms... Right, so, so the question is, in terms of.
He qualified, he qualified his statement.
But what I'm saying to you, though, is that, that in a legislative matter, it is a fairly debatable standard. It does not have to be, it does not have to be based on evidence in the record, is not necessarily weighing, it could be a discussion, and because it's a policy matter, you can discuss amongst yourselves because it is ultimately a policy decision.
Did you have something to, that we'd have to reopen the hearing if you're gonna add something to it? Hold, hold, don't say me, is it, is, is it something that we're worthy of reopening the hearing? Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Vera to reopen the hearing, a second from Councilwoman Hurtak. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission staff. I was just gonna point out, um, it wasn't part of the presentation, the official recommendation before you tonight, because the vote of the Planning Commission was consistent, but the staff report will indicate that when staff did their review, it was inconsistent. So that might be something that council would want, want to take into consideration.
A motion to close from Councilwoman Hurtak, and a second from Councilman Vera. Maniscalco, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
I think one day we should.
Can I get big names?
I think we should all one day just move to different seats and just see what happens.
Yeah, there you go. I, I think we just name you all, uh, one name, Fred, real Fred.
Why don't we change our signs the other way around, since everybody there knows who we are, but you don't?
Exactly. Very good, okay, so the, uh, we are, we are, we are closed, any further discussion?
No, the serious side, I, I, you know, this is one of those 50, in my mind, any, one of those 50/50 deals. If the property to the west of the one in the corner was R-20, it would be less complicated, much less complicated. But when you have a vacant, and then you have another one going for an R-20, that means there'd be maybe two more coming, because the one between the two, the one to that left of that one complicates the issue, although that's not the case in front of me. But I'm thinking, not for today, but for long term. And that's where the problem comes in with me, anyway. I'm not, I'm not here against you, I'm here to, but I, if, if that property was next to the one in the corner, I'd have no problem with it.
Councilman Maniscalco.
It can only go one way then.
You know, Bay to Bay is very interesting, I drove through there today, not because of this, I went to the ice cream shop on Dale Mabry, and that's how I cut through. That's where I was before here.
You and your ice cream.
I know, but Bay to Bay is just very unusual, because you have a mix of residential, and you have a mix of commercial and residential. You know, if you go on one side of Dale Mabry, going towards, uh, Lois, you'll see it, you know, a lot of houses. But this way, from Palmasia, from the church there, Dale Mabry, going towards McDale, it's just, you know, you have a church, you have a house, you have a business, you have a strip center, you have a Starbucks, you have, it's just a very unusual, and it's a narrow street, in comparison to, you know, something busy like a Dale Mabry, or a Gandy, or a Kennedy Boulevard. Bay to Bay is just unique, you know, Henderson Boulevard, a bad example, but I think there's one residential home on that street, I think, left. Uh, and everything else has been converted to office space and commercial and whatnot. Bay to Bay is still, you know, it's just, it's still a mix, so I'm gonna say yes to this, uh, because to me, I think Bay to Bay is just unique in comparison to a lot of other streets.
Yeah, I'll make one of those, because I, I had that infamous statement of South Campus full, this also doesn't put additional children in the schools, which is a big problem in South Tampa, the schools are also, are full, so if you take residential off the table.
But you can't guarantee it's not gonna be residential, so I, I don't.
What, are you looking for a PD?
In fact, talking about Bay to Bay, that's one of the only streets where a bicycle and a car are in the same lane.
Yeah, that's true.
But is that, can I talk?
No, it's closed, I'm sorry.
Talk.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, and.
Would you like to read this?
Yeah, but let me say also, I've had a lot of conversations with neighbors and neighborhood associations around here, and there are discussions about what to do with this strip, and it's, I think it's like four, four, six houses left, but it's mostly commercial, and, you know, we did a neighborhood commercial district plan a few years ago, which wasn't complete. But the, the neighborhood, many people in the neighborhood want to have a more robust discussion about this, it's just, this one is a little bit ahead of the neighborhood building any kind of consensus, but still, they have to come back in a rezoning, so I, anyway, I'll just make a motion, see what you all think. So I, I move file number TACPA 25-01, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance amending the Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located at 3606 West Bay to Bay Boulevard from residential 10, R-10, to residential 20, R-20, providing for appeal while ordinances conflict, providing for severability, providing effective data.
We have a motion for Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. I guess we do, we probably should do a roll call vote, yeah.
Vera?
Yes.
Carlson? Miranda?
No.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Hurtak?
This is a tricky one, I'll, I'll, I'll trust it, I'll go yes.
Clint Ennin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried with Miranda voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held on August 28th, 2025, at 10:00 AM, at Old City Hall, located at 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, 33602.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Thank you.
Flying along, item number two.
Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission staff. Excuse me? Uh, I just handed, um, out some copies of a revised map that is associated with this text amendment, just as an exhibit to display the boundaries, it is not part of the adoption of this text amendment, as well as revised language that the applicant, um, sent, uh, earlier, that, uh, just a little bit ago, uh, related to this text amendment. So I'm gonna go through the presentation, talk about the text amendment, and then talk about the revisions that are in front of you today. And I have something on the Elmo, I'm not sure if it's showing up on the screen yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
It should.
Do I have to click something?
I thought it was automatic.
Okay, thank you, to whoever was listening. So this is a text amendment to the Channel District Periphery Bonus, but specific to the, or sorry, Central Business District Periphery Bonus, but specific to the Channel District, again, I'm Jennifer Malone. This is a privately initiated text amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, so it's changing policy in the plan, and it would change the CBD periphery bonus within the Channel District CRA boundary to be, um, as of January 1st, 2025, but there is some new language in front of you, so we'll go over that a little bit later in the presentation. The history of the Central Business District Bonus Periphery is that it was established under the very first Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in 1989. Uh, there's a historic map here on the slide, and the purpose was to create the transitional area that supports higher density residential and mixed use development compared to other parts of the city. As you all know, downtown was a lot different in 1989, and this bonus is a doubling of, for those properties in this periphery boundary. And so it was really to give that competitive advantage for the neighborhoods around downtown, um, to kind of bring up more residential and mixed use development. And it's remained unchanged since its original adoption. Um, so the, the specifics of the bonus is that if you're within the periphery of the Central Business District, your project can have a 100% maximum density or intensity permitted within the applicable plan category. Channel District projects, as proposed, projects within the Channel District CRA would be eligible for a 200% increased density and intensity above the current flu maximum. Um, and then there's also specific bonus criteria that developments have to meet in the code, because the code has the implementing language for this bonus. But the plan, you know, establishes it. I have an example here of the, um, the, what could be, uh, considered, and, and the kind of intensity that we are looking at in the, in the Channel District. And so this is just, uh, like a sample site, about 0.47 acres, and so you can see how much the intensity would go up, up to, if, if this is approved, and it's in the Channel District, there would be a higher maximum area square, a maximum area square footage. This is the map that was presented to the Planning Commission, this is the map, this is, uh, reflective of the language as it was proposed to staff and then carried throughout the process. It is illustrative in purpose only, because this is a text amendment, but we wanted to give some illustration of showing folks where this could be applied. So this is the Channel District CRA boundary outlined, and you can see most of the Channel District is regional mixed use 100 and heavy industrial in the surrounding area, there's, like, I think it's like 10 acres of heavy industrial left in the Channel District. The map on this slide is the one that I received early this morning, um, after some coordination with the applicant, where the applicant has agreed to amend the language to remove projects south and east of Channel Side Drive. And so this is, again, just illustrative only, showing what that would look like, so everybody can see where that would apply. And then this is a summary of the future land use categories in the coastal high hazard area within the Channel District CRA. I think this is important to point out, since most of Channel District is in the coastal high hazard area. So this would be increasing some residential in that, in the CHHA boundary. And then this is the development impacts, um, we're looking at about 15,000 units or 22 million square feet of residential or non-residential development, kind of cumulative, um, based on the RMU 100 lands in the Channel District CRA, but that's the highest potential if, if the bonus is utilized as written. Um, actually, I take, I, this analysis was done under the language that staff reviewed, and not the current language that's in front of you, so these numbers would be a little bit lower. Uh, City of Tampa staff objected to the request, and the school board let us know that some of the schools in the area are, have been identified as overcapacity. The Planning Commission voted consistency on this request, these are the policies that they cited specifically in their motion, and then the vote is in your resolution in your packet. The Planning Commission saw this as a way to encourage infill development on vacant and underutilized lands, to promote mixed use residential infill in the Channel District, and to encourage higher density multifamily development in pedestrian oriented areas, and we all know how pedestrian oriented Channel District is. So with that, the Planning Commission recommends consistency, um, and that would be before you today to transmit the language to the state that the applicant has provided, removing projects south and east of Channel Side Drive. I will turn it over to the applicant, unless there's any questions for me.
Councilman Randy, you had one of your questions.
No, I'm sorry.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanna, um, put some context, if I may. You all know that several times I've made a motion, we discussed over the last two or three years, adding density to, um, Channel Side, uh, the, the Channel District, and, um, I've had extensive conversations with Linda Solcena, Andy Scaglioni, Ken Stoltenberg.
Councilman Carlson, um, this would be questions for the Planning Commission, you may want to hold those comments.
I just want to put it in context, because she just put it in context as well.
Yeah, I was just, I was, but I'm before the applicant speaks, maybe she will talk.
Well, he can correct whatever I say as well, but I'm almost done. 30 more seconds, please. What?
Mr. Chairman, I, if, it's, it's council's pleasure as to whether you recognize the council member at this point in time or not, so it's.
Well, for questions for the Planning Commission staff, but I was, should he?
Well, he's, I don't, I don't believe he's gonna ask questions.
I should have made, I should have asked him to make a statement before she spoke, but because I forgot, I'm asking to make a statement now.
Yeah, I would, I would ask you to hold, wait till after the applicant, so that we have a clean, you know, a clean presentation, then you. Then you could do that. Councilman Maniscalco? Okay, okay.
Good afternoon, Addie Clark, 400 North Ashley Drive. With me tonight is Ken Stoltenberg, longtime resident and developer in Channel District, as well as my colleague Alex Shaler. And Jennifer did a great job, so we're here before you tonight with that privately initiated Comprehensive Plan text amendment to increase intensity and density in the Channel District CRA, with the exception of areas east and south of Channel Side Drive. So you can see here, I think, this graphic where the purple shaded is where we're talking about. And as you know, there's a, a larger publicly initiated modification to the comp plan and to the code, um, occurring right now. But, um, given the input from all the different parties and the breadth of that effort, uh, we believe that this text amendment offers some changes in an interim solution that can be, can be implemented sooner. So it's important to note the history of the Channel District, which was a Channel District CRA, which was established in 2004, to, to focus on the area as a distinct industrial district, separated from the CBD by the railroad and the flour mill, shown with the purple arrow. And at that time, there were many distinctions between the CBD and the Channel District, and, um, the Channel District was really an abandoned warehouse area. And I think that third bullet, um, describes it really well, that's actually an excerpt from the Channel District Community Redevelopment Plan, and describes the area back then as an aging industrial area with declining investment and few residents. Fast forward two decades and a year to now, and Channel District and other areas have grown significantly with Gasworks to the north, Ebor Harbor coming online to the northeast, Encore, Tampa Heights, and the one that has changed it all really immediately to the south of Channel District, which is Water Street. Shown here, you can see how just under 10% of the land in the CRA boundary is defined as underutilized, meaning the, the building that is on the land is actually worth less than the land below it. And so only a few tracts of land are available today to be developed, and Ken will go into detail as to why those small, kind of awkward irregular shaped parcels are, um, are, are really hard to develop at the currently allowed density. And moving on, this slide does a good job at relating the Channel District to the CBD, since both are in the coastal high hazard area, yet the CBD, just on the other side of Meridian, has unlimited density and height only restricted by FAA and HCA. And you cross Meridian there in the purple, and the lines between the Channel District and the CBD really have been blurred with that removal of the flour mill and removal of the rail lines, and the new growth, of course, that is Water Street. And so with the CBD having unlimited FAR in density, we believe that the requests before you today, which is to go up from a, a seven with bonus to a 10.5 with bonus, is entirely appropriate. And so here's just an example, um, for an RMU 100 designated parcel, which currently has a base FAR of 3.5, can bonus up to a 7.0, and with this, we are asking, um, with bonus, to be able to go up to 10.5. And this map shows the majority of the Channel District CRA in pink, with this area that we are focusing on tonight outlined in the black dash line, um, in the CBD in maroon. You can see from the existing and planned developments designated with the white stars, this option to be able to bonus up to a higher FAR would be entirely compatible with the surrounding area. And really want to focus on, um, the aura, which is proposed just less than 500 feet west of the, of the Channel District, um, and that will not be subject to any FAR maximum. And then here, this graphic shows just how close Channel District is to the CBD, um, including Water Street Phase 1 and 2, and some of those proposed developments that we just showed. And then a major difference between CBD and the Channel District, as you know, is that the CBD periphery bonus can only be achieved, one, through a binding site plan, and two, through a bonus provision agreement, uh, that has to come before you all. And so as you know, it's during that rezoning process when really important details such as buffering, access, transportation, shelter mitigation are all heavily scrutinized and assessed, and must be provided for. So we thought this analogy of a safety net was really appropriate to show how that rezoning process really must analyze and provide for all these important factors. And then lastly, um, I know the 2045 Comprehensive Plan is still a draft, but given that that's ongoing, we took a look at that. And so the Channel District in that draft is contemplated as a coastal development area, as well as a regional activity center, sandwiched between two arterial roadways where growth is intentionally being directed. And then looking at the, the currently adopted comp plan, the 2040 Plan, multiple policies support this request. Land use policy 3.5.4 specifically encourages the continued efforts to promote mixed use residential infill redevelopment at various densities in the Channel District. And then 9.4 on the bottom there encourages higher density multifamily development in pedestrian oriented urban areas, um, which, as Jennifer mentioned, really is the Channel District with that great pedestrian infrastructure and connectivity. And then lastly, policy 9.9.5 on the bottom recognizes how downtown in the Channel District CRA are blended now more than ever before, and encourages opportunities for incentives to direct growth where it makes sense. And now I'll introduce Ken Stoltenberg, who's a key part of the, the success of the Channel District, and he'll go why, into why the bonus provision is really necessary here. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Ken Stoltenberg, uh, 18, I live at 1208, uh, East Kennedy, uh, in Grand Central, in the Channel District, so, um, the, the reason we're here before you with this text amendment is we have a, uh, we've had several parties, but one party is very interested in purchasing a piece of property that we own and to a. that we own and to adjacent neighbors, Whiting Street and Channel Side Drive, which is right across the street from where all the cruise ships come in. This, the proposal is for a condo hotel, which we think is absolutely the, the proper and highest and best use for that piece of property because of the cruise ship traffic. To make the condo hotel model work, you need a density of at least 10. Addie mentioned the ORA condominium hotel that is right across the street from the Channel District. I know the two developers there, and in fact, they wanted to be in the Channel District. And we met with staff and they couldn't get the density that they needed, so they just scurried right across the street. Tampa didn't lose that investment. I made sure that, of that, but the bigger question is should we be limiting, discouraging that type of, you know, high-intensity use in that area? And I say the answer is no. And I've had conversations with most of you regarding that, and I think that the, the follow-on public initiated amendment is going to take care of that problem and also the approval process and make it less onerous and more certain, which is, I, I use that word a lot, but that's a key thing for develops. We like certainty. We love it and we tend not to spend a lot of money unless we have to. So this is a good stopgap measure. It, you know, in no way, I think, limits, you know, it, it, it helps what can be done there right now. And I know we've got a follow-on measure that's got a further, furtherance of that. And that's why I think it's a good idea and I would ask for your support for this here, here this evening. One other comment, we've talked about the coastal high hazard area a lot. And I think with the weather events that we had last year, this isn't brought up enough and it should be. It's not where you build, it's how you build. If you look at a lot of the stuff that was at the beach that got damaged or destroyed, they're all older buildings that were built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s before modern building practices and certain height levels above habitable space above sea level were introduced. I was down there, you know, several days after Helene, and the newer buildings that were built after the code that came into effect in 2000 had minimal and most zero damage whatsoever. That was absolutely totally different for the structures that were older that sustained a lot of damage. So I wouldn't get hung, hung up as far as promoting growth or not promoting growth in, in coastal areas. Again, it's, are you constructing things to the modern codes that take into effect the weather conditions that don't, don't appear often, but when they do, bad things can happen. The buildings that are designed and built today are designed to withstand that and be resilient. So I'll just, I'd like to get that out there because not, not a lot of people bring that up enough. They say we shouldn't build in an area here or area there. It's how you build and, you know, the, the state has done, in my mind, a very good job in making the current code very stout when it comes to withstanding these type of events. And, and, and they're not going to go away. Some people say they're going to get worse, some people say it's going to stay the same. But the current code as it is now is, in my mind, quite good for that. So I, I just want to be on record as saying, again, it's not where you build, it's how you build. If you don't build, you know, to withstand hurricanes, you can be 50 feet up in the air in the middle of Seven Heights and it'll fall down. So with that, again, I'd ask for your support and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ken. Does that conclude the presentation by the applicant? Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Were you going to speak first?
I would say, do you want to? Well, I, I mean, if, 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 do you have a question or do you want to speak?
I just want to say something.
Pontificate? Okay, well, then we'll go to the pontification part. Councilman Carlson.
No, it, it'll be repackaging some of what was just said, but if you look at the map, I, I've said this before, we've had these discussions several times, it, the CBD on the left side, the western side of Meridian can build up to the FA limit and they can build a maximum density and they get administrative approval, but on the eastern side, they can't. And it seems kind of arbitrary for developers in that area and it's, it's not fair as, as that area to the west becomes highly dense that the other side has five-story buildings. Linda Solcena, Andy, I think Ken and others were involved in setting the rules in the beginning and considering that there, that it's choppy now that there were exceptions made and that, that it's different on the western side, they feel strongly that it should be changed. I just was on the phone again with Linda on the way over and, you know, she, like, like the, Andy and Ken, she takes great pride in the plan for Channel District, but it, it, it changed after that. And so she agrees that it should be maximum density there. This is the first of two steps. The next step is the publicly initiated one. And so I'm, I'm strongly in favor of this because, because we need to do this. It will allow higher density in downtown. It'll allow stronger urban core. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Maniscalco.
Thank you very much. So I, I love Tampa and I'm very proud of what this city has become, being a Tampa native. And a few weeks ago, I was walking through this area and, and I've seen the changes. It was mentioned what 1989 was and what it is today, but what a beautiful area. I was walking down Meridian. I was going through the neighborhood on a Sunday and I saw lots of families, lots of young people, which I would assume are college-age, college graduates, you know, young professionals in the area, from Sparkman Wharf to Water Street. It's just amazing how it's changed. And if you look at downtown, and we're talking about the maximum allowable, you have a, an invisible border, border meaning a road, where on one side you can build X and on this side you're limited to, but it was shown on the map, we have Gas Works. We have, what's changing in Ebor City, the next phase of Water Street, all these new people that are moving here, the demand is there. People are coming and people want what you see here, that, that live, work, play. You have the streetcar. You know, a lot of people I know that live in that area, they don't have cars. It's not about, oh, it's going to increase traffic. It's, those people are biking, walking, streetcaring, Ubering if they need to, but they're staying in that area, they're working in that area, they're living in that area. It's a real downtown, it's a real big city feel. And, and if you've seen how downtown died here, you know, in the, in the middle part of, of the 20th century in the 60s and 70s and how it's come back, you know, that people, people's hunger for that urban core instead of that suburban sprawl, this is just adding to it. And again, it's to make it consistent that you can build in the central business district so much, but going across the street you can't. It just evens it out because people are coming here, the growth is coming here. Again, this is, it's a, it's a, the part of the city which is the downtown part and the growth is going to come. I, I'm happy to support this, you know, this first step. And it just, to me, it's a no-brainer. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm very excited to see what is happening and what's going to happen. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hurtak.
Thank you. My only question, my only concern, and maybe one of the applicants can answer it, is if we can put the map back up. Yeah. One of the things I've heard over and over again is that the parking lot next to Sparkman Wharf is going to be developed, and I really want to know why that's not included in this. Because that surface parking lot, I, I mean, that is not, that's, I mean, all, I mean, the rumors are always around, that's going to become a really high tower. I, I'm just, I'm curious, I mean, obviously, we don't want to put any Portland in it, but I don't believe that's Portland.
You might know better.
It's, it is, there's a lease that, that I believe is still, is that, is that still the case, Addie?
Oh, just state your name for the record. Sorry.
Ken, yeah, y'all restate your name when you start talking.
Ken, Ken Stoltenberg. It, it's my understanding that that is a ground lease that Sparkman's Wharf sits on and that's why it's, it's not there because it, it is port-controlled, but I would ask the planning commission.
Not, not Sparkman Wharf, but the parking lot next to it.
I think it's the same.
Oh, it's the same thing? Okay.
Jennifer Malone, planning commission staff. When we were coordinating with the applicant on the revised language before you tonight, I clicked on every parcel that was removed from the boundary and confirmed that they were all under the ownership from the property owner as Tampa Port.
Okay.
So there might be the ground lease of different uses, but.
Okay, that's fine. That was, that's why I asked because that's truly what I hear and I still believe that is the highest and best use to do something other than have it surface parking there. So I.
A question about that, though. The area on the Ebor Harbor area is not port-controlled. The section that got sold for the Ebor Harbor area.
The, the Ebor Harbor area, there was a portion of it, a small, less than 50% is in the Channel District. The majority of that is not in the Channel District. That's in, in Ebor District, I believe. So what's shown is pink, this area here.
The, the, the dark pink over there around.
That's not in the Channel District. The, the, the stuff that's red here is.
That's what I was referring to.
Oh, sorry. This, Jennifer Malone again, this map shows the Channel District CRA boundaries.
So why was that area of the Ebor Harbor excluded?
It's never been in the Channel District. It's always been in the Ebor District.
No, yeah, that, yeah. Okay, that map.
Well, this right here?
Yes.
Because.
It's east of.
Right.
It's east of Channel Side Drive. But it's not owned by the port. It's owned by Daryl.
Daryl, yeah.
No, but the part, may I?
Yes.
The, the old banana dock, which is that inlet there, is owned by the port and then a piece of that red part up above. And I understand from staff, there's a separate application that's coming before us at another time, so that, that will be addressed, but not in this one.
Okay, I, I mean, I understand that this stuff is going to be further clarified and addressed in future hearings. Any other questions, Councilman Miranda?
I just want to echo what Councilmember Maniscalco was talking about. As he was speaking, I was thinking back to 1974. That's a long time ago. There was nothing downtown. I mean, nothing. You could come out of the parking lot, make a left turn, turn, never look right, never because there was no cars. Why? Because there was no people. Why? Because there was no buildings. They were full. They were all empty. And even the Tampa Theater was on the brink of going under. It was passing to, to salvage a place on a 4-3 vote. So I remember all that. I remember where the aquarium is at now, right about there. It was citrus nitrate, open air. When the wind would blow, David's Island would turn white. And I remember the old Coca-Cola plant. I remember all the bars, all the police, all the drugs, all the prostitution that was going on. And not that I was involved, I was here. I, I see everybody looking at me with a little eye like that. So let me clear that first.
And there are sirens in the background.
They're coming to get you, Charlie, on past charges.
I give up. But what I'm saying is, you know, what Tampa has transformed because of individuals like yourself and the people in the city coming over, we were nothing. There was nothing to do in Tampa. And now you have vibrancy, you have a city that is growing so fast and so rapid that we're behind in getting caught up. And I remember the streetcar when it was originally here, like 50-some miles of it. It went from Bay Shore all the way to Bellas Point, all the way to Fuara and Lineball, all through Ebor City, West Tampa, High Park. It's gone. We were stupid to take it off. We did the, under the Greco administration with Ron Rotella led the charge, and the streetcar is on there now, was done under that administration and it was done with a reason. And it was picked up the cost by many other people. I think Tampa Electric was one of them and other businesses along the line. And if it wasn't for the little things that the public has done, we wouldn't be talking today. We would still be back, we're having nothing. I remember what Maniscalco said, I remember what the council member said, and it's changed. Tampa has become a different city than what I grew up in. And for the betterment, yes, it has some downfalls, I'm not going to deny that. But it's a city that people want to come in. Kids now don't want to go college and go live somewhere else. They go to college and come back, back where they came from to Tampa. And that's what's making the city, not us, the people that go to school and come back and they stay here. So what I'm saying is things like this are certainly the right thing to do. You have to have height, you have to have where you don't spread out more cars, central area located where all the action is going to be as far as livable and so forth and so on. So these are the things that you have to look at. So I'm 110% with it.
Thank you. We're going to have Councilman Carlson give closing remarks and then we're going to open the public comment.
Yeah, just one, one, two, two quick last things. Ken Stoltenberg is, is a real innovator and, and early adopter of this area and, you know, he, he saw a vision for walkable streets and restaurants and stage works and supported the arts. I think you all know that, but those stories were a long time ago. It doesn't get a lot of credit now because it's so long ago, but this is really a remarkable transformation. But it, this, this and the future change doesn't just benefit him. A lot of his land is developed already. For example, on the, on the southeastern side of Meridian, there's a, I think, a five-story building called Pier House that related, developed four-story, a, a building that Related Group built because of the, the restrictions that were there at the time. I, my understanding is Related has since sold it, but they could go back in and buy that and build with that footprint, they could probably build two or three high rises there. And so there's plenty of property that is, that could be developed or redeveloped even if there's something in the footprint there now. There's a lot of potential for this.
Thank you, Councilman Carlson. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none. Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilman Maniscalco, a second for Councilman Miranda.
What?
I said move to transmit.
Okay.
Yeah.
The.
The amended? Okay.
Transmit the amended item, which is TACPA 25-03.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda to transmit the item as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, 501 public hearings. These are quasi-judicial. If you are in council chambers this evening and you, we, you are expected to speak or testify on any of these items, please rise, raise your right hand and be ready to sworn in. Thank you. Okay, item number three.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask that city council receive and file all written comments that have been accepted for and available for public inspection.
We have a motion to receive and file written comments from Councilman Maniscalco, second from?
Vera.
Councilman Vera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And again, if there's anybody, if there's been any ex parte verbal communications, please disclose that prior to the start of that hearing.
Has there been any ex parte communication? Hearing none. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, Council, Leo de Bartelaben from Development Coordination. Agenda item number three is AB 22504. This request is for the property located at 1301 West Cass Street. The property owners are Thomas and Carmen Montero and the applicant is Liam O'Dowd. The request is for alcoholic beverage sales with bar lounge classification for beer and wine consumption on premises and package sales off premises consumption. The applicant is requesting AB sales in 1,475 square feet of indoor area, 812 square feet of outdoor area for a total of 2,287 square feet of AB sales areas. The proposed hours for alcoholic beverage sales are closed on Mondays, no sales after 10:30 PM on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and no sales after 12:00 AM midnight on Friday and Saturdays, and no sales after 9:00 PM on Sunday. Have the aerial map to show here. The subject property is outlined here in red. This is the corner of West Cass Street and North Willow Avenue. If you remember, Council, the Jade Apartments, there was a AB application that came in a few months ago. The pattern of development here is largely commercial and intensive uses to the south of West Cass Street and then going north on Willow, there's more of a residential pattern of development. This is the site plan that was presented by the applicant. This is North Willow Avenue here and West Cass Street. So this is the.
Can you move it up a little?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
So the building is here. You can see the, the proposed outside area, the, and the surface parking here, and there is a bicycle rack here. The pattern of vehicle use area is going to be entrance on Cass Street and exits on Willow Avenue. A note has been added to the site plan for no outdoor amplified sound. I'll show some pictures of the site. This is looking at, this is the, the front elevation of the site. So this is the view from West Cass Street and North Willow Avenue would be to our right. This is looking north on North Willow Avenue. You can see that there's residential use along with some commercial uses as well. This is looking north on North Willow Avenue. You can see that there's residential use along with some commercial uses as well. This is facing east on West Cass Street. Um, you can see the downtown skyline, the Jade Apartments to our right, and then those more intensive uses on, to the south there. This is facing south from the corner of West Cass and North Willow. Uh, like I said, there's more of an intensive use as you go south on North Willow. This is a, a view from the west. This is the side elevation of the property from North Willow Avenue. There is a residential property that borders the outdoor, the proposed outdoor area. This is facing west from the corner of West Cass and North Willow. This is facing north from West Cass. This is the abutting alley. The, the property, or the subject site is on our right. And to give you an idea about the, uh, the rear of that building, this is facing east from the alley. Development Coordination and Transportation Staff reviewed the application, and, and the request is inconsistent with the applicable City of Tampa Land Development Regulations. Minor site plan modifications will be required between first and second reading, if it is the pleasure of Council to approve. And I also have a supplemental revision sheet. And I'm available for any questions.
Council have questions. Councilman, or Councilwoman Hertek?
Thank you. Uh, um, so I just wanted to, to restate, no amplified noise whatsoever outside?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you. Applicant? Start with your name, please.
Oh, yeah. Good evening and thank you. My name is Liam O'Dowd, and I'm here to respectfully request approval for the AB two permit to serve beer and wine at The Thirsty Wizard, uh, which is planned to be a small, community-focused wine and craft beer bar, located at thirteen oh one West Cass Street on the corner of Cass and Willow and North Hyde Park, a vibrant, walkable neighborhood with a strong local identity. The Thirsty Wizard is designed around a sci-fi theme with warm lighting, vintage books, and quirky decor, all intended to create a cozy, creative environment. The goal is to offer welcoming space where locals can unwind, meet their neighbors, and enjoy great conversation. The building has deep roots in my family and my family's history. Uh, my grandparents, Carmen and Tomas Montero, have owned the property for decades. And then for almost twenty years, they operated La Nica Fashions there. Um, some people might remember it as the pink building, but I've since painted it green, and I'm working to give it new life. I grew up working in the space, so it's just not a business venture, but a way to revitalize a meaningful part of my family's legacy while supporting the neighborhood's continued evolution. As for the waivers I'm requesting, to make this a reality, I'm respectfully requesting the following waivers for the distance separation requirement from other AB two establishments from two hundred and fifty feet to ninety-five feet. Uh, the area already supports similar and compatible uses, and the business will enhance the walkable nature of the corner and complement its surroundings. And then regarding the parking reduction waiver from the required twelve to five, um, as you can imagine, bringing an eighty-year-old structure up to twenty-twenty-five code is no small task. Um, after applying all current right-of-way and separation requirements, the maximum number of allowable spaces is five. Fortunately, the location is highly walkable, and many of the customers will walk, bike, or use ride share. The area is also surrounded by major apartment complexes between Cypress and Kennedy, reducing the need for onsite parking. Regarding the drive aisle width reduction from twenty-four feet to eighteen feet, um, the existing building cannot be moved, and this condition is not something that can be changed. Um, an eighteen-foot aisle is still safe and appropriate for the scale of traffic expected. Um, my family and friends have helped me act out the parking, uh, plan shown on the site plan, and it is very functional and safe. Regarding the right-of, right-of-way maneuvering, um, which is to allow vehicles to maneuver in the right-of-way, um, given the building's layout and existing sidewalks and right-of-way, this would be the only feasible option. Um, this is a condition that has existed for decades and not, and cannot be changed due to the property being surrounded by right-of-ways. Low speed limits at Cass and Willow do mitigate safety concerns, as well as we've implemented a one-way traffic flow entering from Cass and exiting onto Willow to make vehicle movement predictable and pedestrian-friendly. I've been proactive engaging with the community, and I've received four mulletos of support from the North Hyde Park Civic Association and North Hyde Park Business Alliance. And I've also spoke with nearby residents, including the adjacent neighbors at seven oh six, seven oh six North Willow, whose support has helped me, um, obtain signatures needed for buffer reductions. Um, the project reflects the neighborhood shift towards walkability, creative reuse, and local ownership. Um, understanding that blending commercial and residential uses requires thoughtful planning to address those concerns, um, in taking the following steps, including no outdoor sound amplifications. A solid masonry wall will be installed to physically and visually separate, uh, our use from adjacent residential. Outdoor seating will be limited to twelve persons with closing no later than ten, and then increased landscaping and plantings along the property edges to help buffer noise and reduce li- any potential light spillover and enhance the overall privacy. These commitments reflect my dedication to being a good neighbor while contributing positively to the area's small business landscape. In closing, The Thirsty Wizard is a creative, family-rooted reuse of a longtime neighborhood building, as well as a responsible, small-scale project that aligns with the goals of having a vibrant and walkable district. Um, I respectfully ask for your approval of the permit along with the requested waivers that will allow me to bring this project to life. Thank you and your consideration.
Thank you. What a, I think this is a very creative reuse. Um, this is going to be something that I harp on every time there's a new development of this type on Cass Street, which is a bike boulevard. You need more bike parking and covered bike parking, because that's the kind of stuff you're going to be able, as, as Cass Street expands, as a cyclist, I love to go to that area, but I can't because there's no place to park my bike. And so I'm a little surprised just along the corridor overall. So I'm trying, you know, one of the things that, as you're providing regular parking, you really, you're wanting the reduction, and you even mentioned, people will bike there. Where are they going to park their bikes? Um, make sure, making sure it's a secure place, covered from heat and rain. And, um, so that would be my recommendation, if, if you're amenable, to add that on. It sounds like you already have a space that's going to be close, but you really want to get people. Now that Cass will connect all of West Tampa to all the way up to Ebor and beyond, people will be able to get to you pretty simply. And so I would just, um, that would be my request.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Menaskalko.
So you said this is a building owned by your family?
Correct, yeah.
For how long?
Uh, since ninety-three or ninety-four, so way before the neighborhood was what it is today, so.
And you worked at this site?
Yeah, as a, as a little kid, and La Nica Fashions helping sweep up the floors, water the plants, even though I wasn't able to really as a little kid, but.
Unpaid labor.
Unpaid labor, yeah.
So you, you said it was called The Thirsty Wizard?
Correct.
And it'll be a sci-fi theme, you know, lounge kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, my family has background in, um, wine. My mother's a sommelier, so, you know, crafting.
This is your venture, your business?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that you have letters of support from the neighborhood. Of course, we have to listen to public comment. I don't know if anybody's here. But, um, I'm glad that you engaged with the neighbor adjacent. You mentioned the masonry wall, uh, no outdoor amplified music, limited to twelve people, closed by ten. I'm, I'm happy to, I think you've covered everything. And then Councilmember Hertek talked about bike parking, perhaps, you know, covered parking, because, you know, it rains here. But being that it's on Cass, um, you know, a protected, well, essentially a dedicated bike area. I mean, you'll get, hopefully you'll get a lot of people that, that bike over. And, uh, I think this is, I think the name alone is The Thirsty Wizard, you know? I mean, Councilmembers of Vera, Carlson, and I are.
Geek, geek, geek.
Yeah, we're, we're nerdy. We're nerdy, so we like it. Sci-fi theme is good. I know at least one is a big Star Wars fan, as am I, so, very good. I wish you all the best. I think it's great that you're, you're not selling it off and that you're keeping it in the family and doing your own thing, so.
I have a question. I have a question. Why the closed on Monday? Why would you put that on, on the site? Were you requested to that? Is that a request?
Yeah, that was part of the, uh, listing what your, uh, proposed hours were, and, um, just decided to close on Mondays.
Why tie your hand up? Because then once you, once that's on the site plan, you never can open on a Monday. Is that, how did that happen? Why did that happen? I know, but why would you like, I mean, you can always close if you want to, but why tie your hands in a neighborhood? Susan, is there a reason for that?
No specific reason. Just, uh, initially putting the proposal together, uh, what you intended the, the hours of business to be, not anything else, but.
I know, but just so you know that if it's on the site plan, that means you can never open on a Monday.
Would be possible to.
I have attorneys, I have attorney staff coming up to correct me.
Sorry.
Susan Johnson of Les Legal Department. I mean, if it's not there to be open, then I don't know the difference between closed on Monday versus no operating hours on Monday. I think it's the same, I think it's the same thing. Because your hours of operation are as listed on the site plan. So if there are no hours for Monday, then.
But if he, if he, if he didn't have that on there, he would have the option at some future date of opening like on a Monday, let's say there was a special event or something, right?
I mean, I suppo- but typically your hours are limited to what's on the site.
I basically sounded like an advocate for the applicant myself.
No, I, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah.
I guess my question would be, just because the hours are on the site plan doesn't mean you have to be open those hours.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, meaning, like, you could be closed those hours, but you can't be open any additional hours.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that was, I think, the question.
Correct. So I think it's six of one, half a dozen the other, to not have hours on Monday or to say closed Monday.
So I'm saying, we, if we, if we eliminated that closed Monday, he doesn't have to open on Mondays, but it would give him the option for the future date to.
The question, though, Martin Shelby, City Council attorney, first of all, it would have to be his request.
Right.
That's number one. Number two is you would have to replace that with specific hours to encompass that. Otherwise, you go to chapter fourteen hours for that day. So it would, it would, it wouldn't just be to take that out. You'd have to make that consistent with, let's say, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday hours. Am I correct?
Correct. I think if there's a, a thought that he might want to be open on Monday, you're better to put some hours in there. But if you don't want that, then you don't, but.
Hint, hint, hint. Yeah, yeah, it's up to the applicant.
If there are no hours for Monday, then generally speaking, he can't be open on Monday.
Right. So for the applicant, if you, if there's ever a time in the future that you could ever foresee opening on Monday, did you hear that?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up to, and state your name again when you start talking.
My name is Liam O'Dowd.
Okay. So do you want to leave the applicant, application as is, or?
Would it be something that it'd be able to change on the second reading?
Between first and second reading, yes.
Correct. Yes. Then I would amend that to match the Tuesday to Thursday hours.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Could, could you just, for, for me and the record and the public, just state what those hours are again?
Uh, it's on the site plan, uh, important.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I just wasn't positive, and I think it would be better for the record.
Yeah, Leo de Barteleben, Development Coordination. So for, uh, Sunday through Thursday, the hours. Oh, I'm sorry, this is my wrong, this is the wrong one.
Wrong one. As soon as you said Sunday through, I knew you was the wrong one.
Yeah.
Sales end, no sales after ten thirty PM Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
So no sales after ten PM Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
We can amend that.
Second reading.
Between person, second reading?
So, no sales after ten thirty PM on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
If we could have, have the applicant just agree to that on the record.
Okay, applicant, can you step back from the podium, state your name and say you agree to that?
My name is Liam O'Dowd, and I will agree to that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this issue? We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor? Oh, stand by. Councilwoman Hertek.
Uh, I just wanted to ask the applicant if he'd be willing to put something on the site plan about, uh, additional bike parking between first and second reading.
My name is Liam O'Dowd, and yes, I do. I will.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Wow, you're.
You got that name thing down.
No, you're, you're a quick learner. Very good. A lot of people don't get that.
We have a motion to close from, did you want to say it again?
No, no, I was going.
We have a motion to close for Councilman Miranda, a second for Councilman Menaskalko. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Councilman Miranda. Or Council, I'm sorry. Councilman Vera. Gee whiz. That is hilarious. Good for you, applicant.
Okay, I just want to go on record as I had a rough morning.
Look.
Okay, I'm sufficiently embarrassed.
You, you have a, you have a very good excuse. God bless you. Councilman Vera.
Yes, sir. Um, I move an ordinance presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance approving a special-use permit S two, S U two, excuse me, alcoholic beverage sales, bar lounge consumption on premises and package sales off premises consumption, and making lawful the sale of beer and wine at or from that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at thirteen oh one West Cass Street. Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date, including the changes between first and second reading on bike parking. Excuse me, in hours. Thank you.
And the revision sheet.
And the revision sheet. Thank you.
Is there a revision sheet now? No, we don't, we won't have one.
There's, actually, there was when I passed it around.
Yeah, but that's the.
And, and there's also other changes that are required on the site plan. Yes, that one.
Okay, so there you go. Revision sheet, hours, and, uh, bike parking. Thank you.
That, that, that revision sheet is the closed Monday.
Yeah. But there's the new revision.
Well, the, the revision, well, there's changes on, that, that's within the report that has been stated by staff. There's an additional one that was passed out on the revision sheet. There are the hours of operation with regard to Monday, and then there's the bike parking.
The point was the revision sheet, the only thing on it was closed Monday.
That's right. But with alcoholic beverage, and staff can say this, if there are changes between first and second reading, those are also contained within the staff report, not necessarily on a separate revision sheet, or am I mistaken?
Leo de Barteleben, Development Coordination. Um, so the reason the revision sheet was presented to council is because there was, it was left blank off the site plan. And it wasn't, and it was not referred to on the staff report.
Okay, that's okay. I get it. Okay. So we had a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Unanimous?
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, at ten AM at Old City Hall, located at three one five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Thank you. Moving on to item four.
Uh, good evening again, Council. Leo de Barteleben, Development Coordination. Agenda item number four is AB two twenty-five oh seven. The request is for the property located at twenty-two thirty-four East Seventh Avenue. The property is owned by Ebor Nucio LLC, and the applicant is represented today by Jim Porter. The site currently has an approval under case number AB two twenty-four fifteen, uh, that came in front of you late last year. Was approved for a large venue classification for beer, wine, and liquor, consumption on premises only, um, in thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen square feet of indoor area only. Uh, there is no outdoor sales.
Can you pause for one moment, please?
Sure.
Councilwoman Hertek.
This came before us not even a year ago.
That's correct.
Is there any substantial change to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Continue.
Yeah. Okay, um, so the request before you today is to extend the alcoholic beverage sales hours. Um, currently, the alcoholic beverage sales must end by eleven PM Sunday through Thursday and twelve AM midnight on Friday and Saturday. Um, if approved, the proposed ending times for sales will be eleven PM Sunday through Wednesday, which is no change for those days, and then two AM on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, as well as the select nights before holidays, including the ones in the original approval. This is the aerial map of the site. Uh, the site is outlined here in red. It's between, uh, East Eighth Avenue and East Seventh Avenue, bordered by North Twenty-second Street and North Twenty-third Street. Um, the, we all know the pattern of, um, Ebor City. There's commercial and industrial all along the Seventh Avenue corridor, corridor. To the south of East Seventh, there's a mixture of, uh, commercial and intensive uses, and to the north, we start getting into the residential, um, development and uses. This is the site plan that was repres- that was, uh, presented by the applicant. Um, nothing on the site plan is changing other than the hours. So this is just a depiction of where the building is and the surface parking that's provided. I'll just go through these pictures. Nothing is changing. This is the, uh, front elevation of the site from East Seventh and North Twenty-third Street. This is facing east on Seventh Avenue. The site is on our left. Um, you can see the commercial and, uh, industrial uses here. Uh, further down on, uh, East Seventh, there's some more commercial, um, uses here. This is the corner of East Twenty-third and East Seventh, looking south. So there is the, uh, more industrial uses, and more intense uses, rather. This is directly across the street, so there is a vacant lot here, a, as well as some, some commercial. This is facing west from the corner of, uh, East Seventh and North Twenty-third. Um, this is down the East Seventh Avenue Central Ebor corridor. This is facing west from the corner of, uh, East 7th and North 23rd, um, this is down the East 7th Avenue Central Ebor corridor. Uh, this is the Columbia Restaurant, um, in the, in the distance there, more commercial. Um, this is from the entrance of the parking lot, so the site will be behind us to the right. This is the west elevation of the site, you can see the surface parking here. This is looking north towards East, East 8th, um, the surface parking that's provided by the, the applicant. Another photo of the, uh, the west elevation. This is looking across from the surface parking lot, this is East 8th Avenue, you can see North 22nd Street, um, in the distance here, and, uh, and the residential uses are, uh, further north. And this is looking east on East 8th Avenue, where you start seeing some of the residential uses. This is just another shot from the corner of East 23rd and East 8th, that's where kind of the residential uses start. And now the, the site is going to be towards the end of the block to our, to our right. This is facing south from East 8th, um, there's, you can see that there's, uh, some vacant land there, and the commercial uses to the south. And that's, this is just the east elevation of the site. Our Development Coordination staff reviewed the application and, and finds the request inconsistent with the applicable City of Tampa Land Development Regulations, uh, due to the request of waiver for the distance separation from, uh, other AB sales locations. Uh, Transportation found the request consistent, uh, minor site plan changes are required between first and second reading, if it is your pleasure to approve. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, I didn't catch you click first, Councilman Carlson?
Oh, no, Hertek, yes.
I do. Um, it, in the last hearing, um, it mentioned annual food sales of 51%, that's not, is that still maintained in this?
Yeah, the only thing that's changed, and I'll, I'll allow the, the applicant to answer, but nothing, nothing has changed on this site plan, other than the operating hours for, for those weekend days.
And, and, I mean, maybe I just disagree with you, but to me, this is not a substantial change, this is just hours changes, so...
Is that required?
This isn't, hasn't even been a year, and generally speaking, this council doesn't have, allow cases to come back for another year unless there's a substantial change, and this, in my opinion, is not a substantial change.
Susan Johnson of Les Legal Department, I, I can look up the specific code section, but I believe it's when council has denied an application.
Okay.
In this case, you approved, and so they're just seeking a change to that approval.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilman Miranda.
I'm, I'm, I'm going back in memory, and I remember this was a long drawn out, in fact, I don't even think it was the same councillor that represented this councillor today was the councillor then.
No, this, we, we heard this, yeah.
Same one? Uh, but I remember that they met two or three times, they went outside and talked, came back in, and finally, they, they agreed to whatever, I don't know how it came about, but they agreed to these hours. So I'll be very interested to listen to what they got to say. Because, and look at that time, that if the hours had changed, it was not going to pass. I'm just saying there was speculation to it, I'm not saying there was concrete evidence. But there was a com- they wanted hours always...
Let's restrict this, just questions for the presentation that we're hearing right now, Councilman Maniscalco.
I think it's already been said, I mean, this was heard about December, the issue was the hours, and here we are talking about the hours, so I'll listen to the rest of it before I make any more comment.
Councilman Carlson.
The, the bottom line, following on what my colleague said, uh, we were going to deny this completely, and then we offered a compromise that I think we were reluctant to offer, and the, the applicant said, as I recall, he didn't, he, he did the deal without even knowing he had to apply for an alcohol license, and then, and then he kind of had an expectation that he was going to get it, and we said, we, we indicated we were going to turn it down, but we would approve it if it wouldn't intrude on the neighborhood, which was setting these hours. I don't know why, but why are we hearing this again, can we just reject it outright?
Again, I, I think we, this is a quasi judicial proceeding, so I think we need to...
No, but that's why I'm asking...
I know, but I'm saying, let's, let's, I mean, I think the question is about the hearing, which I think Susan Johnson...
But my question is, are we, are we required to go through the whole hearing, or can we just cancel it based on the fact that there's nothing new?
That may be a basis ultimately, but it's certainly the applicant's right to make the request, there's nothing in the code that bars the opportunity to, uh, appear before council, and has an application pending before you, which has to be based on competent substantial evidence. Obviously, the context is there's a previous, um, um, record with regard to the findings at the previous hearing, which may be relevant to your decision, but to the answer your question is no, allow the applicant to make their case.
Exactly, so what we're gonna, this, so right now, we're, we've heard this part of the, what we're going to do is we'll hear from the applicant, get questions from the applicant, and then they'll play plenty of, and the public comment, and then after that, there'll be plenty of time for council to weigh in on their opinions based on the evidence that they've heard, okay? So applicant, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman of Council, Jim Porter with Acrum and 401 East Jackson Street for the applicant. I appreciate the conversation, I was not part of the original application, if you recall, I was brought in afterwards, and quite frankly, they've been open for about seven months, and the restrictions are really hurting them economically, and they're having trouble surviving in this economic environment. My initial counseling of them was to wait for at least a year and establish themselves in the neighborhood, but they felt they could not wait. So we're here today to make the best case we can about why it would be appropriate to extend the hours of operation, and we, that's our duty and our burden under the law, to prove that to you. And this really is a case about context and orientation, about where this property sits. Um, I listened to the last hearing, I heard the concerns of the neighbors, I heard the concerns of council, especially, um, Councilman, um, Councilwoman Hertak, um, and I'm here to try to address those as best I can. I understand the setting, I understand the, the situation you're in, but they are in a bad situation, and we're here to make a, a pitch of why it's appropriate to extend the hours of operation. I'm going to spend a little time orienting you to the site, um, with some photos, Leo did a great job, as always, with the photos, but I, I kind of want to drill down a little bit about why this location is unique and why it's worthy of, um, considering hours of operation. We're going to start with the location.
If you change your name, I don't remember.
I did, Jim Porter with Acrum and 401 East Jackson Street, I'll say it all, all you like.
I don't want to get nasty grammar.
No, no. Yeah.
So this is the site, this is 7th Avenue, um, as you said, the Columbia's down here, Big Al's, um, Soul Food, which is a great restaurant, by the way, um, is directly across the street, and as Leo said, as you come down, um, 8th Avenue, there are some pretty intense commercial uses there. Um, you have the Ebor Auto Shop and the Olympia Stone and Quartz, that's sort of catty corner from here.
I also want to show you the comp plan, because I think this is very, um, instructive. And my point of this is, this, this establishment is oriented towards 7th, it's part of the 7th Avenue.
This is sort of, um, you get a sense of what we're talking about, this is the subject property, it's CC 35, and coming down along 7th and down 8th, it's consistent with that CC 35. Um, to the west, it's, we have, we have a couple of different comp plan categories, but you can see the trend here, but this, it, the orientation is towards on 7th, down this way, south. This is the facade as of the building, um, it's, again, it's a beautiful historic building, Councilman Miranda gave a very good history lesson about how long the property has been there, and it's been re, readapted and reused, uh, for this restaurant. This is another example, and, and I'm trying to draw a, a show a picture here about where it's located. So you see, this is the subject property, immediately abutting it is a parking lot. So there were concerns at the first hearing about parking, uh, there's a parking lot directly abutting the subject property. This is another, you can see another example of that, this is Shrimp and Company, another restaurant, commercial establishment. This is looking down 8th, and again, Leo mentioned the, the more intense commercial or almost industrial uses, that, that sort of defines where we are, and if you're looking down 8th Avenue, you see the Olympia Quartz, uh, facility, which is a pretty intense use. Again, uh, Big Al's directly across the street, another restaurant use. This is looking up 8th Avenue, um, Big Al's, and this is our property here, and you can see it's going that way. This is a very important, um, slide, too, this is directly across the street from us, you can see the available sign. Small businesses are struggling, this business is, Ben's Model Agency is no longer there, and it, that's across the street from us, we're dealing with that. This is also a very important photo, and I want to draw your attention to it, this is immediately, this is part of our property, but it's the lot immediately in back of us. So when you just look at a map, it looks like we take up the entire area, we don't. This is a very significant piece of yard that's in back of the property, before you get to the residential. This is the residential house on 8th Avenue directly in back of us, and you can see it's boarded up and, and vacant, and not in very good shape, this is 8th Avenue. 8th Avenue looking west, and again, you see a lot of open space here. This is, uh, the parking lot. There were also questions at the last hearing about what kind of establishment this was, it is a restaurant, here is a photo of, um, the menu, it's a full menu, including a brunch menu. There is a full kitchen. Just more examples of the kitchen. There's also a coffee bar present, so it's trying to be, it is trying to be a restaurant, you can see sort of the, the layout of that. Basically, the property is surrounded by a parking lot on one side, an abandoned house across 8th Avenue, um, and a vacant lot in back, and the, the commercial across the street. The use is compatible with the surrounding area based on the photographs I've, I've shown you, um, Saddlebag is trying to take a, take its role as a good neighbor seriously, they've had neighbors in to see that the, um, the property and what it's about, um, and they're taking their role very seriously, they're, they're, they're keeping any problems down. Um, previously introduced into the record, I'm going to introduce again, is an acoustic analysis dealing with noise, and also a safety plan that they're following. We also have 10 emails in support that I'll be submitting into the record. It's fundamentally unfair for a, an establishment like this in Ebor City to be restricted, um, in a way that other establishments similarly situated are not restricted. Um, we would respectfully ask for your approval, we do have some people that want to speak, um, that are associated with the restaurant and other neighbors that are in support, so I'll reserve time for rebuttal, and I'll submit these into the record, um, at the close of the hearing.
Thank you. Are they, are they going to speak on, in behalf of the applicant, or is this...
Yes.
Okay, very good. Start with your name, please.
Brienne York.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all, I'm the general manager of Saddlebags, I've been here since just before opening. Uh, I pride myself on keeping a very clean, enjoyable, safe environment for every single guest that walks through the door, we get a lot of people from the neighborhood coming by, a lot of regulars that come by, we've done, uh, a bunch of themed events, we've done events for charity, uh, we have professionals that come in for lunch almost every single day, and dinner reservations as well for families. I personally teach the line dancing lessons on Saturday nights for everybody, so, um, I, I just love this place, and it's just, it's tough to survive, uh, closing at midnight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is David Becker, I'm the security manager for Saddlebags, same as, uh, Brienne, I've been there just before opening. My number one, uh, thing about working, especially in this type of environment, this type of, uh, like hospitality, if you will, is that the people come first. I'm not there to be a, like, intimidating or anything like that, I want to create as much as a safe environment and fun environment as I can. I have a very highly trained, uh, security staff, I am a veteran, and as well as half of my staff are as, as intern, sorry, I'm not that good at public speaking.
Yeah, you're doing great.
Thank you. But it is, it is definitely difficult with our hours, however, we definitely strive to maintain a very clean space inside and outside. But if you would, actually, I'm just going to close it there, I'm not very good at this, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello again.
Hello, uh, my name is Esmeralda Los Santos, uh, Stormy Bay Entertainment, and, um, my purpose in coming is I've been visiting Saddlebags, and it's a great, unique, um...
What's your name, sorry?
Porter.
Mr. Porter stated, the location of the business is important for several reasons. I do event promotions for the Hard Rock, I do event promotions around the city, and I've been doing them for over 20 years, in Pinellas, Tarpon Springs, and I own the business over in Hillsborough Avenue, which is not, uh, open anymore, it was an event center. But the, the location of the building is important for what I try to do, which is bring professional, uh, networking events to the city, just because it's not in the center of Ebor, where a lot of the concentration happens with a lot of night activities. So being able to bring that more professional, 25 to 54 professional group is important because of the Columbia Avenue, the Columbia Restaurant being there, and being open later, uh, will allow us to go ahead and attract, uh, more people to Ebor City, I do a lot in the Latin community, and it's hard to do stuff in the Latin community in Ebor City, believe it or not, even with it his, with its history of what it is. It's hard to draw people there, it's hard to draw because of everything that has happened before, but the fact that this is at the other end of 7th Avenue, uh, it's important for people like me, and, um, in, in trying to get some of that professional, uh, professional, I guess, environment back in there for meetings, for what would, might be small gatherings with music. The location, I think, is great because of the parking, uh, there is parking adjacent to it, there's the... Again, the, the most important part is that it's away from, I guess, the, it'll be the western side of 7th Avenue, and developing that other side, I've always been attracted to doing events in Ebor City, but I've always had the challenge with the parking, always had the challenge because of the, what's attracted down there in hours, um, Fridays and Saturdays specifically, but extending the hours has been a challenge, uh, and I've gone to the venue, and everyone that's come to me say, hey, you know, go look at that location, but when I've go to, I've gone to them and I've seen, they're like, oh, well, we're restricted these hours, it hasn't been happening. It really is a matter of can we keep bringing professionals down there on the weekends, keep them away from where they don't want to be, which is a much younger audience to the other side of the avenue. Um, so I think for that reason, I would highly hope you consider extending those hours, I think it would be great to continue to grow, um, in the direction that Ebor wants to go, which is bringing older professionals back to there, but there are, the restrictive hours there just go in their swell. I'm booking stuff when it comes to, um, networking, sometimes downtown, and some of the stuff is a lot happening at the Hard Rock, it's the Hard Rock. Uh, but it, I, I think, just, ho- hope you could consider the fact that this is a very unique venue with parking, away from all the other action, which has been negatively looked at in 7th Avenue, and I think the direction going forward, this type of venue is going to be needed. Um, in that's it, in that part of the, of, of what's going on, with making it more residential, whether, um... And you, hopefully, the other changes happen, hopefully, on the other end, but I think extending these hours is going to help people like me, who have asked me to go look at that venue for different events, um, and probably bringing them and helping them survive. Um, it's tough, those hours are tough, and everything else that's going on on the other end, it's tough to deal with, with what's going on in that neighborhood, in Ebor City. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Is that it?
Um, that, that's it for the applicant's presentation.
Very good, okay, for, questions for the applicant, Councilwoman Hertek?
Um, so I'm going to ask you the annual food sales question, because we haven't had a year yet.
Right, I don't think they have that yet, so they're operating as a restaurant, they, that's what their, what their goal is, but I don't have that information at this point, um, because it hasn't been a year yet, they've opened, uh, December 27th.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, very good, thank you. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item, if you'd like to speak to the item, if you want to line up to the wall over here, and we'll call them in the order? Was everybody here sworn in, is there anybody that's not been sworn in? Speak now, forever hold your peace, everybody's been sworn in, thank you, okay, go ahead, start with your name, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone, my name is Denise Sanser, I am the president of the Historic East Ebor and Gary Neighborhood Association, and I'm here representing, uh, myself and all the members, um, just want to say good evening again, and thank you for hearing us tonight. I'm speaking for the Historic East Ebor Higna to strongly oppose this request of 2:00 AM. Our community is united against this change, and this is why. Saddlebags originally applied as a restaurant, not a nightclub. Extending them to 2:00 AM with an 800-person capacity makes them a club, plain and simple. You know, this violates the spirit of their, um, it violates their spirit under the original Tampa Comprehensive Plan, which prioritizes balancing Ebor's nightlife with our historic neighborhoods, allowing this risk that tap, that balance. Let's talk about ordinances, Chapter 14, Article 4 caps the nighttime noise level at 55 decibels, um, at residential property lines. Saddlebags with less than 200 feet away from the first property, you know, exceeds that, with late-night crowds and in, indoor music. You previously required them to close at 11, aligning with places like Columbia and Santo Stefano. A 2:00 AM extension ignores that president's NRP's. Parking is another issue. Chapter 15 requires adequate off-street parking, but with 800 patrons, Saddlebags lot will overflow, spilling into our residential right-of-way. Section 27-283.13 restricts special event parking near Seventh Avenue to prevent congestion, yet late-night crowds will clog our streets. Chapter 27 demands businesses keep their areas clean, but a 2:00 AM club scene will leave trash, bottles, wrappers, and stuff in our yards. Safety hits the hardest. You know, Ebor's club history is troubled. The 2023 Seventh Avenue shooting killed two and injured 16. In 2016, Club Sky saw eight wounded. 2019, the Ophirum had five hurt. Tampa's police reports over 1,200 cores in Ebor's nightlife core alone in 2024, with 300 of them being for disturbances or fights in venues near, like Saddlebags. Okay? A 2:00 AM close invites more chaos, threatening families steps away. Our community fears eroded quality of life, noise keeping kids awake, cars blocking streets, and trash piling up, and violence looming. The Tampa Comprehensive Plan demands balance. Saddlebags, as a nightclub, will throw that out. Keep Ebor safe and livable and keep them to their 11 o'clock time as you wisely had before. I did want to just show the, a few things, you know, rest, they keep applying, they keep stating that they're a restaurant, but since when do you charge an entry fee to enter a restaurant? The inconsistency with the hours, you asked to be first, you, you know, we visited this a few months before. It was a no. Now you, you put in a revision for 3:00 AM and then you revise that again to 2:00 AM, but your website clearly says until the party stops.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Luke Swanson. I'm here to support the applicant. You know, I appreciate the fact that Saddlebags has been a safe place that I can go. You know, and being open later certainly opened up a lot more opportunity to make sure this business doesn't fail. I'd be concerned if it doesn't get the extended hours. This is gonna be a vacant building, you know, within a year. But I really appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Ryan Wells. I am the owner and shareholder of Pitch a Friend Tampa Bay. I'm here to support the applicant on two different levels. One, as a small business owner. Saddlebags has done a great job at supporting other small businesses. In Ebor, there is a heavier party scene and not a very big community scene. Saddlebags is one of the first locations that I've seen that has actually been supporting the community and has actually been doing events that actually bring people in in a community standard, more of a wholesome experience rather than just a party scene. I also, speaking of that party scene, someone who does go out themselves as a, you know, young person, I generally avoid Ebor, which, you know, removes business from you guys. However, with locations like Saddlebags, that has brought me and my friends back to Ebor because it is specifically a safer, cleaner environment that has actually been more conducive for people like myself, who enjoy actual community events, things that bring people together to where we can learn together, stuff such as line dancing, their Latin nights, as opposed to just blaring club music and throwing each other around on the dance floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Townsend Belt and I'm, might have missed an opportunity when the applicant was presenting, but I'm here with Casa Ebor, which is the property manager for the owner of the entity. I also just recently opened my new practice on 1309 East Eighth Avenue and new, new, new business in Ebor City. From the property manager's viewpoint, it's really been trying to make Ebor City a place to live, work, and play and is very interested and concerned with the district. It's not really been shy about, and I can say this from my personal experience representing it, that it's not been shy about enforcing non-monetary violations of leases, including, you know, obtaining an injunction to stop a nightclub that was operating improvidently, the Queso Bar, back around the time that the Super Bowl was here, or having default notices sent when its tenants have been engaging in conduct that's drawn violations of codes and ordinances. So certainly wants to see the, the district do well and become that live, work, and play. It's also plugged into the community and has not really had any complaints about the current operations that Saddlebags has had. And I can say from my experience, you know, in having had my office a month ago, being in the Wells Fargo Building downtown and my current office at 1309 East Eighth, they share one thing in common and that is that they're both less than a block from the Trolley Stop. And what's unique about Saddlebags is there's nothing else in that district from whether you're looking from downtown through the Channel Side District to Ebor City that really is doing the same type of entertainment and that play element. And so it adds diversity to the play element. Saddlebags has been clear with, certainly the, the property manager also that it is, it does believe it's not gonna make it. And so we just wanted to be here to express support for, for its request that it seems like it's been a good operator, not drawing any types of real complaints about what it's been doing. And when I reviewed the comments that were submitted, there weren't really complaints about its actual operations that it's going through now. It's more seemed like concerns about what it might do in the future if the hours were extended. So with that, I don't really have anything else to say.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes in-person public comment. We have one person registered online, Fran Constantino. Fran, can you hear me? Fran, please turn your camera on. And she, did we unmute her or is she muted?
Share, I shared my, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't, we still can't see you.
Yeah, this is very important, actually.
We'll give you a few minutes if you see if you can share your camera. Did you, did you work with CCTV staff to get that? So it's not on our side? It's on our side? Right. Who do you want to ask a question of? Oh, sure.
Ms. Johnson-Velez or whomever, the, the representative of the neighborhood association presented evidence that the, the applicant is charging a cover charge unlike a restaurant and also that their, their hours were until the party stops. Is that, is that relevant to the case or?
Susan Johnson-Velez of the Department, that's evidence that's been presented and it's council's, within council's purview to weigh that evidence and determine the relevancy of it and the weight that you want to give that.
How does that translate to the code? Do they, are they under a restaurant license and then they're operating as a bar? Is that, is that relevant?
Well, I'm gonna ask, I think, I believe they're a large venue, so I don't, I don't believe they're a restaurant necessarily, but I'll, I'll ask Mr. DeBardele to address that.
And if I can, Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. If staff could also talk about, there's been talk about a reporting requirement, but for a large venue, is that an added, was that an added condition to the site plan?
Leo de Bartolavon Development Coordination. So with the original application, and it would continue with this if it's approved, the applicant is a large venue. So there are subcategories under that large venue classification. The applicant originally agreed to do the reporting in like a good faith effort to show that they're not gonna be a traditional bar. So they, they haven't reported yet. It's not their time to report yet, but they did agree to those hours, those restaurant hours. I mean, sorry, the restaurant use in a good faith effort.
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna give Fran just another minute to see if she can get the camera set up.
So I have a question for the applicant.
Hold on a second. No, we, because we're in public comment, I think we need to.
Oh, okay.
Before we take another public comment? Because if Fran comes back online?
Yeah, if that's council's pleasure, I don't think it would, it would harm the record.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Hertzak.
So for the applicant, I, I have to assume that the, that the business operations is being run in such a way that they know where their revenue is coming from on a month-to-month basis. So I really need to know that we are working as a restaurant and so far have had the 51% of, because all of this is moot if in December they come and say, they don't make 51%, they're out of business. So, so I mean, I would just have assumed that coming here, you would have had something, anything. Can anyone testify?
So I think it's important, Councilwoman, to really appreciate why we're here. We're here to extend the hours of operation. As your staff said, it's a large venue. They are operating as a restaurant. They have a full kitchen and they have a menu. The legal requirement, and again, I didn't represent the applicant the first time around, so I didn't make any commitments and it wasn't put on the site plan. There's no legal requirement that they do that. They are, as a good faith effort to show that they're a restaurant. I submitted the menu into the record. I showed that they have a full kitchen. You heard the general manager testify under oath that they have people for lunch and for dinner. That's all we can go, as far as you can go legally, that's all we can do at this point. And I also stated, I don't have that information because they haven't been open for a year yet. So I, I think it's important to make sure we understand where we are. From a legal perspective, they're a large venue. They are committing to operate as a restaurant. They're fully equipped to be a restaurant and they're acting as a restaurant. But that really isn't a part of your decision-making today as far as the reporting. I understand it's something you're interested in, but I think your decision needs to be based on what it is and what we're asking for in competent substantial evidence.
So Mr. DeBardele, I have a question for you again because that was, those were conflicting statements. He says it's not on the site plan, the 51% food, and you said it is on the site plan.
So yes, let me, I can put that copy of the site plan out. If you can see it. You can barely see it, but in the site data table.
You can zoom, you can, yeah, the wheel at the top.
Does it have autofocus?
Yeah, sometimes it does. Sometimes we have to get CCTV to focus it for us.
Even if that was focused, I still couldn't read that.
Ah, see? I knew, they're, they're magic back there.
So item or number, general note 21, the property owner or license holder must maintain accurate records of daily food and alcohol sales and submit an annual report.
Okay, so it doesn't say it has to be 51%.
That's what the reporting would confirm. Like we, yeah, we do annual reporting and if they're not, then they're, they're in violation of the, of their site plan.
Okay. Thank you. And, and the reason this is important is, again, I'm gonna go back to my original thing. I just think it's too early.
Okay. Okay, so the app, the speaker that was online is unable to get her technology brought online, so we're not gonna be able to accept her public comment tonight. So that'll be closed, that'll be the end of public comment. Is there a rebuttal? Okay, well, actually, so is there any further questions of counsel? Okay, Mr. Porter.
Yeah, I apologize for any confusion, Councilwoman Hertzak. I, that, that makes sense of what he's saying. It just wanted to draw the distinction between official and what's there. So we'll commit to that, but again, it hasn't been a full year yet, which is part of your issue. So there we are. Let me say at the outset, counsel, I fully appreciate Ms. Sansor's coming down here and speaking. I fully understand her concerns. Although I think it's important to remember, the things that she mentioned and the things that she said were also brought up at the first hearing and they, they have not come to pass. And that really is the whole point of why we're here. There were a lot of concerns about parking, about spill over into the neighborhood, about noise. There's been absolutely no evidence presented that any of those things have happened. So I understood, stand prospectively, people were concerned about it. We've been opened for, again, seven months, which is not a year, but a significant amount of time. And there's absolutely no evidence on the record that we have violated any law. We're not under a code enforcement violation situation. We have been good neighbors. We're, we have a security system in place. We've done a sound ordinance and, and we're being good neighbors and we, we're being respectful. I would, if counsel moves this forward, I would love to meet with her and her group and if we could talk about other ways to be a better neighbor. But I think, you know, your attorney will remind you that your decision needs to be based on competent substantial evidence. You've had competent substantial evidence presented and I'm putting it into the record with the noise evaluation, with the, with the security plan, with the photos, with your staff's testimony and with the testimony of the people here today. So I'm going to respectfully ask for your approval and answer any other questions that you might have.
Councilwoman Hertzak.
When did you put this application in?
March-ish, yes. And they, again, as I testified or not, I don't testify, I'm representing. I counseled the applicant to wait and they really could not wait. And even when it came in in March, it takes this long to get forward. So they wanted me to file as soon as possible. And again, I understand, I completely understand. But you have, I'm trying to convey their desperation from a financial situation and that's why we're here.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Miranda?
I'm just thinking to myself and I'm having a brainstorm or a blood leak somewhere because restaurants are the most dangerous thing in the world to do. Thirty to 40% of all restaurants close within five years when they open. It's a high rate of, this council didn't make the agreement. Your client made the agreement for these hours. We just listened to it. When I sit here and listen to audit, name me one restaurant of good standing that has a security staff and I'll tell you how many, none. So what do we have a security staff for? That, that is in my mind to bring it out. And, and the gentleman seems to be a very nice, outstanding gentleman, by the way. And I sit here and I listen and knowing what I know, and I started the restaurant business when I was 14 years old, worked on, I know, that is Calabria Restaurant and Spanish Park. At 16, I was up in Lake George, New York for seven summers. That doesn't make me an expert, but I know what I do, well, I know how to run a restaurant. I was a managing partner, I got back there for 10 years. I left because I wanted to do something else and it was even more dangerous. I went to train racehorses. But saying that, it's, we're not here. The deal that was made was made, your client that was not your client because you weren't representing them at that time. And I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Porter. And I, you know, I know you're an outstanding attorney, but I, this is coming like for us to hand over something so they can grab onto something to keep, continue in business. That's why I look at it, from what I've heard in presentations. So is that fair to the public? Yes, you have no record of anything going wrong at this level, closing at these hours. Your testimony is correct up to that point. But once you get to the other level, there's no testimony that can handle that because it's not having to happen. So it, it's fine and it's not great, but it's fine. I appreciate it. You're the, you're the representative clan, you're doing a great job. So going on those things, it, it, I'm concerned about what will happen. First of all, east of 22nd Street, there's very little activity. Restaurants that are close to each other do better than those that are way apart because one day you eat here, the next day you eat there and you have. But with the name of Saddlebags, there's nothing wrong with it, but it doesn't have a name that sells restaurant. You know, you can go Wendy's sells hamburgers, McDonald's has hamburgers. You have great restaurants like Donatello, the Columbia, Burns. They mean something with a name like that. So with a name by itself. They mean something with a name like that. So with its name by itself, it's like line dancing because it, you know, that's what I look at it at, which is fine. But the argument that I see here is not selling me on moving to two o'clock in the morning because I've heard nothing about it. I've heard very little concerning what could happen. And we do have evidence of Ebor City, what can happen? And because of the peripalation of those lounges that are not restaurants, and I'm saying, I'm not saying this is the case. I'm saying that's what's causing the problem in Ebor City. So what can happen after that? I don't know. I don't know because we don't have a 51-49%. In fact, I don't know if the city even checks on that. We used to have a line every three or four months that would go all around here. The whole chamber would be full and I think you remember that. And we would find the people or some even close them down because they violated the law. And the city would come do the audits to the restaurant according to their purchases. We haven't done, that I know of, we haven't done that. Maybe we have, but I'm not attuned to that. So I don't know if the rules have changed in the city. I don't know anything was happening. I don't know if they're still doing the audits because I have seen no action on it at all for the last 10 years. So it's a very difficult situation that this council is in.
Thank you. No, she, no, no, it's constantly, we're moving past that. She couldn't get it fixed. Counselman Carlson?
I just wonder for Marty or Ms. Johnson-Valez, are we allowed to refer to the competent substantial evidence from the last hearing? Or, and/or can we adopt that as, to receive and file as evidence for this hearing?
Ms. Johnson-Valez, unless you disagree, I would say, and it was brought up, it was brought up during this hearing, that the only change is to the hours of operation. And the hours of operation, those hours were put in place at the time because that was relevant to adjusting for adverse impacts. So now if that's going to change, so the answer to your question and the fact that it was raised here is that yes, the application, original application and the site plan that has not changed except for the hours of operation is relevant.
I just have to say, I need to get this objection, a very strong objection on the record. This is a new application where there are due process concerns with this. This is a full new hearing. The other hearing is relevant to the extent that we asked questions about it, but let me just register on the record a very strong objection to any consideration other than anything in the confines of this hearing tonight.
In the sense that, I'm sorry, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. The reason that it came up was because it was raised in the course of the hearing and it was either brought originally in this hearing as evidence and it was responded to. So the objection is noted, but the fact of the matter is that you're relying on the site plan that's been presented now and you're relying on the competent substantial evidence in the record.
Counselwoman Hertek, did you have a question?
No, I was going to do motion close, but we need to have.
Well, actually, I'm going to give him another opportunity because we've had some more discussion.
No, I respect Mr. Shelby's opinion, but again, I feel this is a quasi-judicial hearing. This is the hearing tonight. If we, if this was ever challenged in court, the record of tonight's hearing is what you would have to consider, not the record of the previous hearing. And that has to, I just, as long as my objection is noted for the record.
And what I wanted to give you is, because we've had additional, more discussion rather, question from counsel, I wanted to give you an opportunity to.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Chairman. I'm the only comment.
If I can, I'm sorry to interrupt Mr. Porter, but I just want to comment on what Mr. Porter said because I think that is relevant. To the extent that you hearken back to evidence that was adduced at the initial hearing, that is not part of this record, that is not relevant. What is relevant is the site plan that is presented and that is something upon which you can base and the reasons that those conditions are on that site plan.
Counselman Carlson?
Sorry, Mr. Porter, to interrupt you.
What about, what about the questions about, that you would use in a de novo hearing, so for example, setback rules? Are we allowed to ask questions about that or is that only relevant in the previous hearing?
Mr. Shelby?
The site plan, as it stands now, exists. And the only change that's being requested that's before you is the hours of operation. That is the only relevant decision upon which you can take evidence and apply it to.
Mr. Shelby, can I ask, maybe it's a statement or question? The site plan is in evidence in this hearing. So all the information that's been presented in this hearing is evidence that we hear unless something has been restated and re-entered into evidence on this hearing. So things that were not presented this evening would not be considered in the decision that we make tonight. The decision we make tonight is only based on the evidence that's been presented during this, from the time we gavelled in for this hearing until the time we closed this hearing, it would only be evidence that was presented to us tonight. In other words, if through our recollection, we remember hearing something in the present last hearing, if it wasn't discussed and put into evidence in this hearing, it shouldn't be used in consideration this time around. Correct?
Your code allows you as a board to place conditions on a site plan specifically to prevent or address adverse impacts. Your recollection and your testimony and the testimony that you've heard today was there were conditions that were placed on the site plan, including the hours of operation, to address the concerns about the adverse impacts potentially to hours that were under chapter 14. So then the answer to your question is that you have to base your evidence on the competent substantial evidence in the record that supports whether those hours of operation should be changed.
Thank you. Counselwoman Hertek?
I have a question for Ms. Johnson-Valez.
And I do want to say one.
Okay, I'll get back to you.
Can we consider a business's monetary concerns when looking at this rezoning?
So Susan Johnson-Valez, Legal Department, so there are criteria in the code for consideration of special use permits, including alcoholic beverage special use permits. Those are outlined in your staff report. There are general standards that deal with, you know, compatibility and impact on surrounding areas. And then there are specific standards for this particular use. So I would, you know, you should follow those standards and determine whether or not those standards are met in reaching your decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, you want to, Mr. Porter, response? Okay. Counselman Carlson?
In the emails that we received that are in the quasi-box are part of the record, right? So one of the emails asked the question, if they're supposed to be a restaurant that serves 51% food, does that, is the restaurant required to offer food until the, until they close? Are they, if they were allowed to serve alcohol until 2:00 a.m., are they required to serve food until 2:00 a.m.? Or is it just an average of the whole time they're open?
Susan Johnson-Valez, Legal Department, I believe that's addressed on the site plan. I think the last note on the site plan requires that, I'm sorry, my glasses are, the establishment shall maintain and have open a full kitchen during operating hours. Full kitchen means having commercial-grade burners, ovens and refrigeration units of sufficient size and quantity to accommodate the occupancy content of the establishment. So they do, they are required to maintain a full kitchen and be open and able to sell food during their operating hours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Porter?
The only comment I'll make in response to, Counselman Miranda made a comment in the form of a question about why having a security. And I'll bow to Counselman Miranda's expertise on restaurants before anyone else. I still miss Cafe Pepe. But if you'll recall, there was concern about security because it is Ebor. And so that was put into place to address proactively any kind of potential neighborhood concern. So that's why it was there, given the location and given the expressed concerns. And with that, I'll rest and ask for your approval. I'm going to submit these that I presented into the record.
Thank you. We have a motion to close from Counselman Maniscalco, second from Counselwoman Hertek. I'd like to pontificate about this for a second. So what I heard was, in the competent substantial evidence submitted this evening, was a lot of that was the location of this building and forward facing on Seventh Avenue and the building itself being significantly offset towards Seventh Avenue away from the abutting properties. In fact, the building faces, as it was pointed out, heavily, you know, an industrial area and other uses. I think there is a public interest in one, because it's a historic building, ensuring that there's a commercial viability in this area and that there's something there that can actually work and provide jobs and employment as well as the entertainment part of it. Also, in the evidence is that there was no evidence to suggest in the seven months that it's been open that any of the questions that had come out in previous testimony for previous hearings or even tonight in public, during the public comment section about the what-ifs, so there was no competent substantial evidence that any of those what-ifs came true. So that we didn't have any evidence that suggested that there was, that there had been increase in the decibel levels, that we've been unlawful, that there was trash issues, there were vagrancy issues, that there were any of the other things that people had been concerned about during public testimony or this time or the last time we heard this. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I think is fairly, is reasonable, I think it was Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's not that unreasonable considering, and we do have code action, and there are code actions happening around the city for people that are not, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing with their alcohol sales and these issues. And we have closed down businesses in the city of Tampa if they are not good players. Is it easy to do? I don't think it is based on my observations, but it can be done. That being said, I, again, I think that the competent substantial evidence presented this evening only indicates one direction and that is for the approval of the hours. I don't, I haven't heard any competent substantial of them and I understand the neighborhood's concerns. I get it. I totally get it because Ebor's got this bad, they've got this bad reputation based on bad players in other areas of the town. But I don't necessarily know we can paint the brush of a bad player to somebody who's trying to do, make a business, provide jobs and provide employment opportunities in this area. So that's it. Mr. Shelby, do you have a closing there?
Yeah.
I'll give Counselwoman Hertek.
See, I disagree. I think that just because they've done well for now, remember, this is not this establishment. It is the property. And, I mean, looking at the land development, the general, the general standards here, the use is compatible contiguous with surrounding property and the use is a public necessity and it, I don't see that. It's like the what's around it is closing at midnight, is closing at 11:00. It's, just because something hasn't happened doesn't mean you can, I mean, if this is what's going to happen, then people are going to keep coming to us every time. If they really wanted this, they would have come to us with monthly food sales showing that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. If this is something you really wanted, you would have come, you would have spoken to the neighborhood, you would have worked at it, but it just seems that they thought, ah, we're not making money, we have to, we have to apply again. And I just didn't hear any reason to expand the hours. Like, to me, they didn't give any competent substantial evidence as to why the hours to expand, except for we're not making enough money. And that's not our problem.
Can I respond?
Sure.
I mean, I think that the fact that a business owner, I mean, businesses go into business to make money and to be able to sustain a business and be able to sustain employment and sustain the, you know, I mean, quite frankly, part of that is, it is the, it is the charm of Ebor City is, you know, having different types of diversities of both eating and entertainment facilities. So that, I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing that a business comes in and says, I can't make money under these conditions. I need to be able to be competitive with similar types of facilities to be competitive. The surrounding, I think when you look at, again, I think when you look at that evidence that was presented by the applicant of this historic restored building facing Seventh Avenue with a gigantic sea of asphalt to its west and an enormous empty parcel to behind it, and then behind that even on Eighth was just a boarded up piece of property and nothing else. And then a restaurant to its, to its east, I mean, and then.
Would you like to make a motion?
No, I'm just, I'm just, this is just discussion. I'm just discussing this now, but what my observation of the testimony was. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Counsel, Counselman Carlson?
Yeah, I just want to add in a couple of other things. I asked, the evidence presented by the Neighborhood Association was that, was a, an ad for the establishment that looks like it's flagrantly violating the spirit and the site plan by saying, we close whenever the party stops. And Ms. Johnson-Valez said that's competent substantial evidence. And then we also learned that they're required to serve food until whenever they close, but they're charging a cover charge, at least at a certain point in restaurants, as was pointed out, restaurants don't charge cover charges. So it, as was also said, the fact that they're not making money is not, is not the, is not necessarily relevant. The, it's, it was, it proved essentially as a restaurant and it is, it wants to turn into a nightclub. And the evidence that was presented is that they're already acting like a nightclub, which is not the spirit of the approval that was given them.
Okay, what's the will of counsel? Who wants to make a motion? Counselwoman Hertek?
We'll see if you guys want to help me out with statements fact. I move to deny AB 2-25-07 approving a special use alcohol permit for alcohol beverage sales until 2:00 a.m. or to change the hours because the applicants provided no competent substantial evidence that it was, that anything has changed, quite frankly. The use is not compatible with contiguous and surrounding properties. I mean, it is right now. It closes at 12:00, like the surrounding properties do. And by this, there is a precedent, the previous restaurants and facilities in the area are the precedent for the compatible use in the surrounding area. There are not bars in the surrounding area, there, it's, or nightclubs, rather, it's a restaurant area. So I want, I believe that it should stay, that it should stay the way it is, which is compatible with the surrounding property.
May I ask the maker of the motion, are you referring to the general standards in 27-129?
Yes.
Is, okay, is there any other findings that, if I can, reference back to you adopt then, let's say, for instance, the competent substantial evidence that was referred to?
Oh, yes, I absolutely, the competent substantial evidence that was provided in the record by, by community members that they're treating this as a bar and not like a restaurant.
We have a motion from Counselwoman Hertek, a second from Counselman Maniscalco. Roll call vote, please.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Hertek?
Yes.
Viera?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Clendenin?
No.
Motion carried with Viera and Clendenin voting no.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the last item, number five.
Leo DeBarlo, Development Coordination, agenda item number five is AB 2-25-11. This is for the property located at 2301 North Albany Avenue. The property owner is San Martin LLC and the applicant is represented today by Mr. Ted Boscano. This location has a current approval for alcoholic beverage sales with a large venue classification for beer and wine, consumption on premises and packaged sales off premises consumption. This request will add a second sales location to the site. If approved, this request will add 2,664 square feet to the indoor only sales area, bringing the total to 8,586 square feet. bringing the total to 8,586 square feet for the entire site. And I'll point that out when I go over the site plan. The proposed hours for AB sales are Monday through Sunday and to, until 2:00 AM, consistent with the current approval. So, they're not asking to change hours. A total of 149 parking spaces are required to this, on the site, and 32 spaces are required, and they are asking for, uh, they've, they've had a previous parking waiver, and they're asking for a parking waiver to, to be approved with this application. Just the aerial photo of... Just the aerial photo of the, the neighborhood. The site is outlined here in red. This is, this property is between West Palmetto Street and West Cherry Street on the, on North Albany Avenue. This neighborhood has a mixture of uses with commercial and residential, and some, some more intensive uses scattered throughout. There's really no pattern of, of development there. This is the site plan that was presented by the applicant. We've, this site plan was a little harder to read, so we've bolded some of the, the areas, just to give you a night, a better understanding of how this, the site works. So, this is one property here. There are two buildings on the site. This building here, and the outline is this whole thing here, is a converted cigar factory. And this is a warehouse that the applicant uses currently for manufacturing and bottling of wine. This request is asking to add this area that's outlined in blue as a wine tasting bar. And this is the area right here that is already approved as a bar. This is North Albany here, and this is West Palmetto with West Cherry here. Uh, this is the south elevation of the property. This is Building One here for context, and Building Two is over here on the right. This is another photo of the south elevation. This is from West Cherry Street. This is directly across the street from that photo, so you can see the residential use, the residential pattern there. This is also on East Cherry Street, facing east. You can see Building Number Two here and a little part of Building Number One. There is some commercial along that corridor as well. This is facing east from the corner of North Albany and West Cherry Street. And this is facing south on North Albany. This is another photo of facing south. This is gonna be West Cherry Street here. Our site is gonna be over to the left. Uh, this is, this is facing west on West Cherry Street and North Albany. This is a side elevation of the, this is a west elevation of the site. Another photo of the west elevation. You can see East Eighth Avenue is here, and this is North Albany. So, this is the warehouse building there, Building Number Two. This is facing north from the corner of West Palmetto and North Albany. So, there's a mixture of residential and commercial uses in that immediate vicinity. This is West Palmetto here, so this is a view facing south. You can see the building here and the Building Number Two. Another photo of that, kind of facing southeast. This is directly across the street from that, the back part of the warehouse building, so you can see the residential uses there, as well as the budding residential uses, and facing east on West Palmetto. Development Coordination and Transportation finds the request inconsistent with the applicable City of Tampa land development regulations due to the waivers that were requested. Minor site plan modifications are required between first and second reading if it's the pleasure of counsel to approve. Available for questions.
Counsel, Madaskalko.
Real quick, what was the parking waiver? The reduction?
So, the, the parking waiver is, let me get the staff report. They're going from 149, that's required, to 32, that's all they have on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there an applicant?
Good evening, council members. My name is Tedoro Boscano. I go by Ted as well, to make it easier on everybody. I do have a PowerPoint, so I would like to connect here, show that to you guys. Okay, um, so again, Tedoro Boscano here. First, I'd like to start by saying that I'm honored that my family gave me the opportunity to represent them in this project here. It's, hopefully I can make them proud today. This is a family business. So, what we're talking about today is, we have been restoring the Y-Pendez and Alvarez Cigar Factory. And I'm going to...
All we have is a green screen.
I see it through here. Sorry. Through with the clicker right here, so just... Give me one second. Do you guys see it, or is it just green for you guys?
We see it, yeah.
Yeah, it's up there. Go ahead, okay, cool. So, we, my family and I have been restoring the Y-Pendez and Alvarez Cigar Factory now for, uh, four years. It's a big endeavor, it's a big, very humbling project for us, but we are very proud to be able to, to do this. So, a quick background on the Y-Pendez and Alvarez Cigar Factory. Used to be one of the largest cigar manufacturer in the world, back in its heydays. This was their state-of-the-art facility in West Tampa, one of the very, very earliest facilities in West Tampa. Not a lot of information, unfortunately, on this property in the generic Google searches. So, my father and I spent quite some time over at the US Historic, USF Historical Archives to find a lot of this information, one of which was the fact that the clock tower there was the tallest clock tower in the state of Florida when it was built back in 1908. So, this property is not only very important to the City of Tampa, not only very important to West Tampa, but also very important to the state of Florida. I want to give you guys a little background on us, because we are a new family to this, to this city. My family moved here from Naples, Italy in 2004, so 21 years ago. I was just 11 when I came here. We've been here long enough to where, when I go back to Italy, I'm called the American. When I'm here, I'm called the Italian. So, I'm trying to find a, a place to finally call home, and I think West Tampa is its place. My family and I founded Wine Stream over a decade ago now. We've been in the hospitality and the wine industry for a couple generations, so we bring a lot of knowledge, passion, and a lot of hard work. Some of the venues that carry our products, our wines, are some of the, you know, famous local spots like For Bee Cheese, Cappy's Pizza, you know, even Yeoman's, to the Hard Rock, Universal Studios, and Trainwinds, and everything in between. And I'm proud to say that now we are one of the largest wineries in the East Coast of the United States. All right, so what have we been up to since 2021? Well, a lot of work, as you can see, that, these pictures are taken from the Hillsborough County Property appraisal website. You can see what the property looked like prior. What a shame, because a magnificent, a magnificent facility, beautiful historic building, but it was ultimately abandoned, and an eyesore to the community there. We've been doing a lot of work on the outside of the property, and we'll show also some more pictures there, really working and taking this project in phases, because again, we are a family business, and it takes time to do a project the right way. That's the important key here. Here's some more pictures of before and after, of what it looked like out there. These are some of the inside pictures. You can see that the, the clock, the top of the clock tower there with the beautiful bell, and those amazing four clock dials. In there was completely rotten and extremely dangerous, and we're just revol, bringing it back to life, strengthening it again, not for a couple of years, but for hundreds of more years to come. With that said, again, it takes a lot of time and a lot of economic powers to do this thing the right way. Can we demolish the inter, interior of it and go straight concrete and make everyone happy at the building department? Yes, is that the right thing to do? Absolutely not. We're an Italian family, we understand history, we understand culture, and we think we need to preserve and give the opportunity to the community to come in and see the beautiful building that this property really is. This is a sneak peek, I'm not allowed to show this. My parents are probably yelling me on their TV right now, because this is a wood fire pizza oven. And we're gonna have a food component to it on the historic side. And that right there on the left is an original cigar label of the Y-Pendez and Alvarez Cigar Company, one of the very first in 1908, in 1909, when the building first released. And we replicated with a local artist, this label onto the wood fire pizza oven. Could we've gone with a different route of a mosaic Italian look like everybody else does? Sure, but was it fair to this building and to the history of this property? Absolutely not. And so, this is just a sneak peek as to the attention to detail, to culture, and West Tampa history for us. This is a, also another sneak peek, it's the video and rendering of what this cigar factory first floor is gonna look like. I wonder if it's gonna go. So, it's just gonna take a couple of minutes here, but this is the main entrance. That's the original flooring there that we are restoring, staircase. Uh, and it's gonna take you into the wine lounge of this cigar factory. Again, I'm bringing this just to show you guys, we've been working towards trying to really come up with the correct vision that's gonna showcase both historic revelant, uh, reverence, but also, you know, a, a new and lively activity in this building, give it back some good life. Focusing on, you know, post-industrial furniture. Right there is one of the clock dials that we're, we're gonna be displaying, one of the original clock dials, has the backdrop to the bar, again, paying homage to the, the clock tower, and the tallest clock tower of the state of Florida back when it was built. And, yeah, this is just the second entrance, so I think I can skip on over. Now, what are we asking for? We were already approved for that wine lounge, and we were approved for the parking reduction. However, because this project is taking quite some time for us to really do it properly, we decided to start allocating a small part of our wine manufacturing space open to the general public. What is this gonna do? It's gonna do a couple of really important things. Number one, start drawing attraction to West Tampa. Start bringing people to this side of town. Right now, this is a neighborhood, and if you don't live here, you've probably never been to West Tampa, like my family and I never did until seeing this property. We want to give folks a reason. By adding this extra wine tasting spot in our facility, which you'll see in just a minute, we require more parking spaces, which you really didn't anticipate at the beginning phases. Our goal was just to use the warehouse space as manufacturing, but things evolve, projects evolve, and we are desperate, desperately needing that connection to consumer, but also starting to bring that attraction over to West Tampa and create a buzz for what's to come. So, we're looking for a 78% park, parking reduction, and we have 16 bicycle spaces. I don't know how familiar you guys are, I'm sure very familiar with the new Riverwalk extension to West Tampa. It actually comes down and it ends at Palmetto, which is 1,000 feet from our facility. So, folks will be able to drive over with their bikes, and we have plenty of space to accommodate that. Another really important point that I want to make here before I move on is, we're a winery, and we're gonna be a wine lounge, and people are going to drink. The more parking we give them, the more ability we give folks to drive themselves to our facility. We don't want that. We don't want it, we don't want themselves to, uh, we don't want them to hurt themselves or the community. So, it goes against business one-on-one to limit parking for somebody like us, but we're happier to say, hey, look, parking lot there gets full really quickly, so Uber, ride your bikes, find alternative ways to come to us versus drive yourself and possibly a danger to the community. So, what does our manufacturing space look like? That's it, it's a winery, full-scale winery. Uh, the only thing we don't do is, we don't have vineyards, those are in Italy. We import our wine fully finished from Italy. We put it in our cellar, in our tanks, and then we produce the wine kegs. We also have some wine barrels as well. And that right there, that space that you see, is that open space that we like to invite folks. When we're done with our manufacturing space, we like to bring them in and get connected with the, with the company, get connected with our product, product that they've been enjoying for a very long time, may I add. And again, bring that movement into West Tampa as well. I probably don't have to go through this, it's late, I know you guys want to go home as much as I do, but West Tampa was a beautiful town back in its heyday, its own city, and has beautiful structures there, beautiful historical structure that most folks have never seen. I think it's imperative that we get open and we start bringing folks over to our side of, of town. If we would've been able to just get it done with the, with the wine lounge and cigar factory, that would've been fantastic, but again, given the complexity of such a project, we need to make a, a quick and small shift to the winery side, still bring people in, and still work simultaneously with the reconstruction, as you saw in the earlier pictures. I'm gonna leave this, this is that, but again, hopefully, again, I've done a, a good job at explaining myself. I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Counsel, Madaskalko.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I like everything you said, except, West Tampa is a beautiful place. You said, "What is a beautiful place." You know, I, I've often called our cigar factories, West Tampa, Ebor City, What's Left in Palmetto Beach, uh, those are the, those are our castles, you know. I don't know of any other places that have these, that has these, these types of structures, because we were the cigar manufacturing capital of the world at one time. And, and we still, I mean, the, the, you know, cigars are very important here, and, and for our foundation, everything. Number one, and we have to listen to the public, I don't know if they're gonna be in support or not, thank you for investing in West Tampa, number, number one. Number two, I remember asking my grandmother 30 years ago, 30 years ago, I was 10, 11, 12 years old, I go, "Why don't you buy one of these cigar factories?" And they were like $200,000. And she said, "And what are we gonna, what are we gonna do with it?" Because they're massive spaces, massive warehouses essentially. So, it's not easy to, as the cigar industry changed into the cigarettes and, you know, Tampa changed everything, you know, these factories shut down, but this was the, the heart and soul of our local economy. Again, empty spaces, what do you fill them in with? Office space, do you do housing, do you put a hotel? This concept is, is unique, because, you know, who would think, wine, you know, a wine lounge or wine manufacturing. But not only that, you talked about, you're Italian, I'm Italian too, the name Guido, I don't, you know, you know, but we demolish so much of our history in this country. You go to Europe, and you'll see a building that's 300, 400 years old, and somebody's living in it, because they modernized it, or there's a business, or whatever it is. You're taking an original structure from, I believe, 1908, I don't know if that was a manufacturing date, for the building, and you're not filling it with concrete. You said something important. We could make the building department happy and do this and modernize it, but you're not. You're maintaining the historic character, because you're in historic West Tampa here. There's, there, there is not just Ebor City, there is historic West Tampa and a significant amount of structures, but you're doing it right. And what I saw in the renderings and the video that you showed, what a beautiful restoration. You know, not just the wood floors, but it's the details on the walls, it's the details on the clock tower. The Newman Factory is not far from here, and people call it El Relo. And people know it as El Relo. And the workers and the residents would look at El Relo, the workers and everything, to see what time it was. So, the importance of the, the, the symbolism of the clock tower in Ebor City, but you have it here in West Tampa. And this being the tallest at the time in Florida, there's just so many special characteristics of this building. And I think what you're doing, what your family is doing, is wonderful. in, in embracing and resurrecting and preserving the history of West Tampa, and, and something that we can be proud of. You talked about, you know, I asked about parking, seventy-eight percent reduction in parking. Why does everything have to be the car? Because when this factory was operational, people didn't have cars, we had a street car, but people lived in the neighborhood, they walked over, they had the shotgun houses, cigar workers, whatever. Some of the best people, if you think, oh, they're just cigar rollers. The most educated people were the cigar rollers, with the el, el lector that would read to them. There's so many things, some of the, the smartest people that I knew, they passed away, I met some cigar workers from back then, the most educated were there, the cigar workers. So the importance of these structures to Tampa's history, to West Tampa's history, but again, going back to the parking reduction and the extension of the Riverwalk, I hope that it, that it continues and moves forward, it's a very expensive project. But the fact that you can, you said a thousand feet, people can ride their bike, people can walk, people that live in that neighborhood, and I know a lot of people that live in that neighborhood, on this side of Armenia, Howard, or whatever, they can walk there, you don't need a car. And yeah, you can even take the bus, you know, we fund it up here, Route One. You gotta figure out how to get to West Tampa, you go up Florida Avenue, and you can take public transportation. We have to stop looking at the automobile, you know, there's Uber, there's Lyft, there's so many ways that, reasons you don't need, because it's expensive to have a car. But something like this, it's in the heart of West Tampa, that was its own city until a hundred years ago, and this is, uh, this is what, this is what I think we need. Not saying, you know, open wine bars everywhere, but this kind of investment and historic preservation and preserving our history, I think is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hertech.
Thank you. I, I agree, I mean, it's a, it's a lovely reuse project, and we appreciate you taking the time and the effort and the money to do that. I did wanna ask about hours, so what are your hours?
Okay, so, um, my father asked me to put the hours to the maximum allowable hours, which I think it's up to two AM, so open to five, close at two AM. Not because we're gonna be open at two AM, but, and it's Monday through Sunday, is because he wants to have the opportunity to say, we're closing on Sunday, we're closing on Monday, and we're closing at ten, not being restricted with, hey, we have to be closed forever, moving forward at ten, eleven, or so on and so forth. I do wanna say that it's all inside, so there is no outdoor noises. Again, we're not a nightclub by any means, this is a, a wine lounge, there's a lot of laughing that goes on with wine drinking, and, but, uh, that's really, the, the point of that direction was, hey, let's ask for it, and then we can make the decision saying, we're, we're gonna be closing at ten, eleven, or whatever is appropriate.
Okay. Have you had any communication with the neighborhood?
Uh, we've met many of the neighbors.
Okay.
And I have some behind me, actually, unexpectedly. I came here alone, a lone warrior today, but there is some behind me. The neighborhood is, is amazing, I've met a lot of these folks, and I don't think we've ever caused any issues in the, in the neighborhood. Again, I don't want to, the parking reduction is a focus on not trying to get too many cars in and out, and really create congestion for the neighborhood, but everyone that I know and that I've talked to has seemed on board on it.
And then, that is my final question, is really like, what is your plan for parking? Obviously, it's great to recommend Ubering, and obviously, you heard me earlier, I'm a cyclist, so that's, that's a big, that would be a big push for me, so I appreciate that you talked about bike parking, and I might, again, recommend bike parking that's protected. People who are gonna come to wine bars are most likely also going to have, like, an electric bike, those are very expensive, and, you know, you don't want those to get wet or super hot because of the batteries, so you may wanna consider that as you, as you move forward, but, like, your plan for parking, other, I mean, how do you, how do you incentivize people to not drive?
So again, I think the focus here is the fact that, you know, nowadays, a lot of people that are going to a place like our space, which is a wine lounge, where, you know, you are going to be drinking, folks are already moving towards, hey, let's Uber, let's Lyft. We can do a lot of things, you can actually, through Uber, you can offer Uber credits for folks to come by, and we will do that. Again, our, our main focus is, the more parking we offer, the more we open up our roads to dangerous driving. So besides the fact that we don't have enough on the property, we've looked at possibly getting other plots of land, and then using those as valet and whatnot, but I think the focus is, we only have thirty-two available, we are in a neighborhood, and future land use around there is all residential, which we love, but it's gonna be more of that communication with, with the end consumer to say, hey, we have Uber credits, take an Uber, we have sixteen bicycle spaces. I like the idea of having it cover, I'm a bi- I'm a cyclist myself, so I take big pride in my bike and keeping it, you know, safe, so I love that input, and that's the, that's the plan going forward.
Okay, I, and, and I just wanna say, I hope, I hope I hear this much love for less parking with other developments, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, 'cause...
I was just blown away that you were actually pestering on parking.
No, but I feel, I feel like we need to ask for the, for the community, but, but yeah, no, I hope, I hope people, by and large, I just wanted to know, I thought that was, I, I don't...
I have one question before you get to the public comment. Are you a land use attorney?
Um, no, I am just one of the sons, and I run the operations of the winery.
Well, I, I think your family would be very proud, because you presented as well, if not better than at least most of the land use attorneys that you have.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
If you'd puke, you presented very well.
Thank you.
So hearing all the questions, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item, come on, going forward? When you speak, please, well, first, I've lost track of who came in late, have you been sworn in?
I didn't get...
Okay, if you'd stand, raise your right hand, and the clerk will swear you in.
Yeah.
Do you swear or vote in a testimony you're about to provide as the truth of the truth?
Okay, y'all can come up, one at a time, start with your name, please, and then you'll each have three minutes, you don't have to take all three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Justin Chang, I'm a local resident, I live about a block away, and I'm supporting the proposal. Anything that gets the clock tower more feasible or renovation-friendly is, is a good thing. In the community, there's plenty of noise with Howard, Armenia, and Rome, you can hear the clock tower around, and if you're okay with that, then I don't imagine any few extra cars driving by will be, be too bad. The side streets are usually cobbled, so that cuts down on the traffic noise and speed. There's been, on, on the, on the agenda, it said that it was for beer, wine, and liquor. I don't have an issue with any, any of those, there's liquor in the area, beer in the area, there's a bar close by, there's some grocers or local, local places where you can buy beer and liquor. And I think the best thing for the community is to get more money and traffic in, and, and get the renovations done, so it looks like a place where you don't litter, where you don't do any of the other issues. You don't have any issues associated with higher alcohol consumption. And that's about it, I'm looking forward to enjoying their amenities whenever it gets up and running, and I'm for this proposal.
Thank you, and just for clarification, is, is this beer or wine, or is it liquor?
Leo de Barde Development Coordination.
You have to, you have to go up here.
Leo de Barde Laban Development Coordination, this request is for beer and wine consumption on premises and pre- uh, package sales for off-premises consumption.
Okay, thank you. So it's just beer and wine, just for clarification, okay. Get, get, get to your microphone, sir.
Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. The description at the heading states beer, wine, and liquor, but the ordinance, as you see, says sale for the beers, beer and wine, and I checked with Ms. Johnson-Velez, and, right, I just wanna make sure that, that, that the, the heading is incorrect, but the ordinance is accurate.
Okay, very good, thank you. Next speaker, please. Start with your name.
Hi, my name is Leah Acosta, and I live four houses down from the, the factory. Make it short and sweet, we're in total support, Ted and his family, they've been great neighbors, and have cleaned up the area so much, and we're very much in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Barbara Meshna, I also live four doors down, and I just wanna say what great neighbors they've been. When they first started the clock, it was starting at eight AM, and it was very loud, and there was nothing between my bedroom and the clock, and so I was waking up every day at eight AM, and we texted them, and they moved it to nine for a while, but now it's very soft, like, I can hear it, but it doesn't wake anybody up anymore, so they're very good with our neighbors, so we appreciate them.
Eight AM, half the day's gone.
Not when you retired, right?
You're speaking to somebody that didn't wake up till ten.
Hi, my name's Marlene Maceda Lee. I don't live there, I was baptized on Albany at Saint Joseph, my mother went to school at Saint Joseph. I live in a house that was built in nineteen oh eight on Main Street. My family's been in West Tampa since, since the late eighteen hundreds. I still live in two years, it'll be a hundred years that my family's lived in this house, which one of the mayors of West Tampa, O'Halloran, Blast O'Halloran, lived in. So I have a lot of history in West Tampa. I love seeing it becoming what it is, I love what they've done to Main Street, I know I'm on the other side of Armenia, so I'm, we're not getting all those benefits, I love what they're doing with the Riverwalk. These people, I don't know if you've seen the building on Spruce in Armenia, it is a disgrace, what they've done to that building, they have, it is painted half-white, the windows are broken, it is terrible. What they have done and spent the time that they have, they didn't just go in there and open it up, they have spent the time to put it back to what it was like. And I, I have a lot invested in West Tampa, and I am just so appreciative of them, even though I'm Spanish. But I, I am just, their wine, I had it at Averoni's, it is very good, if you ever go there, you still have it there?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and you don't get a headache with it? It is wonderful, and I hope you, you give them whatever they need, because they are just such a benefit to West Tampa. And they just built a couple blocks away, those, I don't know if they're apartments or condos, I think they're apartments, which are young, those people walk, my kids, and even us old people, we Uber everywhere now. You know, if we're gonna go someplace and we drink, we Uber, my kids, who are in their forties, they Uber, they ride their bi- I have friends that ride their bikes, you know, so it, it's just a benefit to have this in West Tampa. I'm just so proud of what they've done and the time they've spent on it. I mean, it has been years and years that they have, and it is beautiful inside what they're doing, you know, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm assuming, based on these glowing reviews, you do not have a rebuttal. Okay, very good. Motion to close?
Wait, real quick, fun fact, because Marlene, the last speaker, is, you're rarely here, I think this is the first time I've seen you here, but...
Well, I was here for TC and a few others.
Okay. So her dad was Marcello Maceda, who was an alcalde, a mayor of Ebor City, right? But if you watch the documentary JFK in Tampa that Lynn Dingfelter made, she's the little girl with her dad that gave a little doll to President Kennedy...
Oh, yeah.
...four days before he was assassinated, right here in Tampa, well, he was here in November eighteenth, so that's the little girl.
So I knew you when you, I knew you from your movie star.
Yeah, you're very famous, very famous.
Councilman Vera.
Yeah, just two things, and Councilman Maniscalco, that, that's, that's so neat to know, I mean, you, that's, that's, thank you for sharing that, your, your love of Tampa history i- is just amazing, but I wanted to say, echo something that Councilman, the Chairman Clendenin said, for the nice gentleman who was presenting, are your parents watching?
I think so.
Well, they should be proud of you, man, they, you did a great job, and when, and I'll be honest, when, I mean, I, I had a reckoning how I was gonna vote on this, but when you started off and you said, I'm doing this for my parents and my mom and dad, I said, I go yo, that's awesome, so, that's Spanish talk right there, I'm Cuban, but...
I was saying, can you tell the Spaniards and the Italians, because they believe with their heart?
But, but you did a great job, and if your parents are watching, just, you did a really good job, they, they should be very proud of you, so, thank you.
We have motion to close from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from?
Miranda.
Councilman Vera. He can beat you to it.
Now, we have to say our names.
You know, that would be helpful. Okay, we have a motion to close in a, in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay, this will be, we'll give it to Councilman Maniscalco.
Thank you very much, since we're, you know, we're all Italian here, so, you know, why not. I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance approving a special use permit, SU two, for alcoholic beverage sales, large venue consumption on premise only, and making lawful the sale of beer and wine at or from that certain lot plot or tract of land located at twenty-three oh one North Albany Avenue, Tampa Florida is more particularly described in section three, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, repealing ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash fifty-five, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda.
And a revision sheet, revision sheet?
No revision sheet, no revision sheet.
Okay.
Not a revision sheet, but revisions are included in the site plan for alcoholic beverages.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. You're next.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM, located at Old City Hall, three one five East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Now, when you get the other building opened up and you get a jazz band in there, you get a full liquor license and sell martinis, I will be there. Very good, okay, that is the last order of business, new business, Councilman Carlson.
Sorry, after so much fun, I'll bring up a serious topic. The, I, I've been to now several of the planning commission meetings with the neighborhoods, and...
I think I saw you at one.
Yeah, one, two.
I've only been to one.
Oh, you, okay. But you, most of you have been to them, I think maybe all of us have been to them, and you see that the public is very, very angry about the proposal that we got, and they're asking a lot of questions about who appointed the planning commission. We, we have four appointees, one of them is, I think one of them is coming up soon, that, because...
Can y'all take it outside a little bit, so we can hear? Thank you.
But one, we have one position coming up, but we have three, I think one we just appointed, and there are two former ones. The other thing that's happened, as you see tonight, is that almost weekly, or, yeah, weekly, the planning commission staff recommends something, and that...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, and my apologies, Mr. Carlson, do you have a copy of the ordinance itself? Because from what I understand, this does not say, and package sales.
The ordinance doesn't say that.
The ordinance doesn't say that? What is the applica- what is the request?
So we have, can we have a motion to re...
No, 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 this is actually, I don't think we have to reopen the hearing right now, because actually, all right, well, you're still here, sir. Okay, if we can, can we reopen the hearing?
I had a motion to reopen the hearing from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, ayes have it.
Uh, the, the applicant's representative, the gentleman is still here. It's been brought to my attention by staff that it, the ordinance should be including package sales, could you please, sir, if you could just come in and state your name and...
Leo de Barde Laban Development Coordination, yes, sir, the, the certified application and the staff report, the request is for large venue, consumption on premise and package sales, consumption off premise for beer and wine.
And the clerk does not have a copy, but you have a copy of the ordinance, Ms. Johnson-Velez, and the title that was read does not include that, but is it your understanding?
Susan Johnson-Velez, the legal department, yes, there is an error in the title of the ordinance, so...
So then, what I'm going to ask then is, now that the hearing is reopened, could we have the title reread with that line in there, would that suffice at this point in time?
And I can provide a substitute ordinance for second reading.
By second reading?
Yes.
So, do you know where, so when you read that, if you, after beer and wine?
In the parentheses, I can, I can write it in if you would like.
We have, we have, we... We have, we have it in the public hearing session.
Oh, you don't have it on that title. You don't have it there, do you?
I don't have it on that title. No, I do not.
I think Councilman Maniscalco's got it, because he can combine the two.
I'll do it slowly, sir, it's clear. You ready?
I'm ready.
I have an ordinance approving a special use permit SU2 for alcoholic beverage sales, large venue, consumption on premises, package sales, consumption off premises, and making lawful the sale of beer and wine at or from that certain lot or plot, plot or tract of land located at 2301 North Albany Avenue, Tampa, Florida, is more particularly described in Section 3, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, repealing ordinance 2022-55, providing effective date.
All right, we have, and Ms. Valdez, is that sufficient?
With the revisions, with the revisions.
With the revision sheet.
Okay, so we have a motion, motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
And if we could.
Ayes have it again. And clerk, would you read that again for us?
And announce.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on August 28th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. at Old City Hall, located at 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, 3rd floor, Tampa, Florida, 33602.
That was a good catch, whoever caught that.
Yeah, I'd like, yes, I'd just like to acknowledge staff for bringing that to our attention.
Good catch.
Thank you for catching.
Sir, if you understand what happened.
I do.
You do. So what it is, is it prevented a problem down the road. Thank you.
Okay, we are going back to Councilman Carlson and. That was important, that was a good one.
Are you guys done? Are you sure?
Well, that was something I thought couldn't wait, so thank you.
So you guys know where I'm going. The public has complained about the.
I agree.
About what the planning commission has proposed. They're asking why we appointed people who voted for that. And then the planning commission staff comes every week, almost every item, planning commission staff votes against it and then the planning commission votes for it. And so my question is, I can make a motion, but my question is, would you, would you all be open to terminating all the, all the seats that we have and have everybody reapply, potentially with new applicants, and then hold a time that we can, that we can appoint new members?
That was, that was raised by city council in a motion that I provided, excuse me, a memo I provided. The memo was dated May 22nd of 2025. The motion was that Martin Shelby, it was a motion by Councilmember Carlson and Clendenon, that Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, be requested to provide city council with the names of city council's planning commission appointees, their terms, and city council's rights in relation to those appointees. Further, that a written report, which I did, be presented to council on June 5th of 2025, under written staff reports, which was received and filed. And if you look at that report, suspension or removal of appointment members is governed by Section 112.501 of Florida statutes. It governs the suspension or removal of appointed members of local government boards, commissions, or authorities when their enabling legislation lacks specific removal procedures. For the Tampa Hillsborough Planning Commission, the Special Act, Chapter 97-351, is silent on removal processes, neither explicitly granting nor restricting the appointing authority's power to remove members. Section 112.501 therefore applies, allowing the appointing authority, e.g. in this case, city council, to suspend or remove members for, quote, "malfeasance, misfeasance, neglect of duty, habitual drunkenness, incompetence, or permanent ability to perform his or her official duties, provided due process is followed." So, the commission's bylaws outlines members' duties like attendance requirements and ethical conduct, like in Section 112, and I'm just speaking now, not reading verbatim, like, for instance, "Three consecutive unexcused absences may constitute neglect of duty, providing grounds for removal consistent with the statute." And that is a memo, I could make that again available to you. But basically, but basically what it says is, it has, it cannot be for political purposes, it has to be for cause. And that would be consistent with that of the ethical conduct, the code of ethics for Florida statutes.
What if we just want to change our appoint, appointing process and the timeline of it, so we change the cycle so that we can appoint everybody at the same time or something like that? So we're not doing it in a punitive way, we're just changing our process.
I can look into that if that's council's pleasure. I cannot make any representations tonight.
Councilman Hertek.
Well, I will just say that I'm, you know, in a way, I'm glad this happened, because I think it really says how important it is when we appoint people to boards, that we spend time talking about it and, and looking at people's records. I think our last appointment process went really well. We ended up with someone who, I've talked to the planning commission staff, they said that Mr. Krugler arrives having researched way more in-depth than he needs to. He's, he's up on things, so that was a good appointment by us. We have another appointment coming up, I believe, very shortly. So that's half of the people right there. So even if there's nothing else we can do, I think this bodes as a good reminder that we put a lot more effort into the people we choose. I'm happy to go with whatever you want, but I would, I would definitely oppose taking Mr. Krugler off. We just put him on. And we went through that deeper process to find someone who we believed would fit that role.
The underlying problem, which we talked about, is that, is that we often don't find out about open vacancies until there's a shortlist already. And, and so when we, when we're alerted to it, we can do something. I think the clerk has started putting them on our, on our agenda. Go ahead.
Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, sorry to interrupt, but you were leading right towards where I wanted to head. I spoke with the clerk again this morning. I want to remind council, in its own Rule 8, which you adopted in June of last year, it says, "Current and upcoming board vacancies should be noted on each agenda," so city council member, city council members and district officers, offices can seek candidates for appointment. Now, Ms. Lucas Harris informed me that if you go on the board and commissions pages of the city's website, you will see what's current now. And she has informed me that she anticipates, working with TNI, that by the end of August, that should be appearing on every agenda, so that council will know exactly and be able to plan for it in advance and be able to recruit people within the community to apply for these positions.
I'm not gonna make any motions right now. I just wanted to throw the idea out there for you all to think about if you have any other thoughts.
Councilman Hertek.
And I'm not against, I'm not against.
No, no, I've spoken already.
Okay, Councilman.
I'm not against that at all, but I think you have to have a reason why. You just can't say, "I don't like that, I want to take them out. This is not the federal government." I mean, I'm being sincere. And the federal government now, police wear masks, so you don't know who they are. And I'm not saying they're right or wrong in doing what they're doing, but that's the only agency that carries masks. So, I mean, there's something wrong the way we're heading in this government. We're losing democracy to something else, and that's just my opinion, but we're teetering with something other than democracy in this country. No matter what party it is, one side or the other, I'm not going there. I'm just saying what I think. And this is a way that these things start, and these individuals, whoever they are, are appointed. It's time, whenever they leave, you want to replace them, replace them. But you have to file charges when you go out to remove somebody, unless you want to get sued real badly.
Well, I mean, let me speak about that first for a second. I think that there's a truth somewhere in between. I agree with Councilman Hertek about how we have to do our due diligence when we make these appointments. Everything we do has consequences as public officials and as member of this board and we sit as a CRA board as well. I do believe that there's an, and I am just as frustrated. In fact, one of the comments that came out of the planning commission, of course, infuriated me, but I basically didn't care what the city council thought. I thought, well, that's interesting from your governing authority. I do think there's, there's a middle answer to both of this. I think that we can go through a process, because within the criteria that Mr. Shelby gave us, there are criteria for removal, and I think some of that is performance-based. And I think if you look at some, I think there's a way of doing this, that through performance, if we chose to take that. Now, that's a very difficult task, because it's not, it's not easy, but it's something that there's somebody that is acting very egregiously, I think we can address that situation. You know, Mr. Shelby.
I can. This also was in the memo, and I'll provide this again to council by email. It says specifically in my memo, "To suspend or remove a commission member, the appointing body must," and three bullet points, "identify a cause under Section 112.501 of Florida statutes. Two, provide written notice of allegations to the commission member by resolution. And number three, provide an opportunity for a hearing before city council, ensuring due process."
There you go.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Marty privately if, if there's, if there's another path, because I would not go down that path, but if there's a path where we could reset the process somehow, I'll have that conversation with you all can, but I have to bring this up here, because I can't talk to you all outside. The second thing is that it's not often that the public comes out. We know the voter turnout is very low, but in this case, with this proposal, we're seeing hundreds and hundreds of people come out, and they're very, very angry about, about the proposal. And so I think in this case, we are doing the democratic thing and trying to listen to the public and make sure we represent the public.
Councilman Vera, new business?
I actually had, I wanted, still wanted to speak on this, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my, my only thing I did want to say in addition to that is that I recently went on the website to try to figure out empty positions. It's impossible.
I agree.
So I hope they, it's got to be fixed. If it's not fixed, then all of this is moot.
May I ask, may I ask, I'm sorry, may I, may I ask that be in the form of a motion, both with the website and with the city council's agenda, in the form of a request or a direction to the city clerk, to be able to do that? Because that, at least that way, it isn't just something on discussion.
The problem is, I mean, I don't know how to fix it. I don't know how to, I don't know how to motion to fix it.
No, no, but, but what, I think what you're.
Okay, can you, can you make the motion you want to hear? I'm sorry.
Direct, direct the city clerk and request the administration to provide the support so that it is clear to city council, both on the city website and in the agenda, what the upcoming administrations to boards and commissions are that.
We already did that on.
Second.
On the agenda, though, didn't we?
No, it, he just, he just said that that didn't happen yet.
No, it hasn't happened, but I thought we did.
Okay, but.
You request, you put it into the rules, but that has not been implemented since it's been in place.
So I'm.
They're in process, so I'm saying, if there's direction by council, it'll be likely to happen that much sooner.
And I just put direction.
I second that motion. We, but even before you all got on council, the first couple years I was on council, we complained about the same thing and nobody did anything, so.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Hertek, a second from Councilman Carlson. I got the names right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Councilman Vera.
Thank you very much, sir.
Couple of quick ones, if I may. The, Councilman Carlson had wisely asked about the racial reconciliation committee, and we're, we were working on this, but I'm glad to update council and also do a motion. So, long story short, for the additional meetings and the frameworks, we're waiting on the individuals from Empowered Inclusion, Angela Crist of USF and Daryl Butler, to provide a written report to us, or really an email response, I don't want to call it a written report, in terms of how they plan on going with the additional meetings, because they are the facilitators and I think it's best for them to do it, given that, that identity. So, so that we can have some jurisdiction, I guess, over this, I, motion for Angela Crist of USF and Daryl Butler of Empowered Inclusion to provide a, a response back to my office that I can update city council on at, at motion time, on, on how they plan to include the request, the requested additional meetings of the racial reconciliation committee. This should be done no later than August 7th. My office, Brandon Jordan Lazo, God bless her, has reached out to them. And again, by the way, they're not, they're not holding anything up or anything of that nature. I'm sure it takes time, but just so that we can have a resolution of that. And then I'll update city council next week on that.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Carlson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you, council. And then two quick ones. Dottie Grover Skipper, who a lot of us know, who does a lot of work for on human trafficking, she helped a lot. We passed a human trafficking ordinance, I guess that was like in 2018. She's being inducted to Florida Women's Hall of Fame. She had asked me to go, I can't go for many reasons on that date, but I want to give her a commendation offsite.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
And then lastly, a commendation of Frank Strom, Director of Veteran Services and Recognition of the Gold Star Family Memorial. I was asked by the Hillsborough County to do that.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Councilman Hertek.
I'm moved to continue the following staff report from September 25th workshop session to the October 30th workshop session. We talked about this earlier today. Staff to present the downtown partnership draft design standards and a draft ordinance for large format digital media for the Central Business District. Any modification to the ordinance shall continue to be led by city staff with collaboration from the Tampa Downtown Partnership. And the reason for this is because the downtown partnership, as Ms. Feely said earlier, just got the approval, so they still need a little more in time.
We have a motion from Councilman Hertek, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
And just to close the loop, I'm still working with Mr. Perry on the motion regarding the credit card fees. There's a lot of little moving parts, and so I will have that motion ready at our next motion, at our next meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Maniscalco.
Nothing.
Councilman Miranda.
No, me more.
Motion received and filed.
So moved.
And we are adjourned.